Testing. Time is 9:05. How many we got? Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If we can all come in and please be seated so we can start our town meeting. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sean O'Brien. I am the town moderator. Welcome to the April 29, 2003 annual town meeting. The time is now 9:05. We have a quorum of 102 voters present with more voters coming in. The tellers have been sworn. They are Greg Dalton, Buzz Artiano, and Kathy Jordan. Thank you and welcome. The warrant has previously been declared and properly noticed with the constable's return to service. As tradition dictates, I waive the reading of the warrant. Please rise for the state of the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the liberty of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd ask that we take a moment of silence for those who've passed and for those residents of Kingston who continue to find strength and resilience and courage to endure through their personal struggles. Thank you. At this time, I'll go through the rules for town meeting. Town meeting is run per town meeting time and our local bylaws and traditions. If you wish to address town meeting, step up to a microphone. You can see there's two in each, there's one in each aisle. Wait to be recognized, and when you're recognized, state your name and your address. Please keep comments under two minutes, and we approach the microphone a second time, but only with new information, and please keep those comments to under one minute. That's obviously for each article. I will explain procedure as needed and will recognize requests for point of order. Motions to amend may be made but must be reduced to writing prior to being debated. Questions of privilege raise issues affecting rights and privileges at town meeting. If your safety, dignity, integrity, if the volume, temperature, noise interfere with your ability to hear, speak, or to participate in town meeting, please yell out question of privilege. Please remain seated unless you are trying to speak at the microphone. Please do not stand in doorways. Please try to keep the aisles clear and take conversations outside. I hope to continue to have a spirited debate and that the meeting both supports and challenges the issues that are presented. You may make a motion to call a question, but you may not debate and then make the motion. Please be respectful to everyone, and remember it's okay to have a different opinion. Does everyone understand the rules of town meeting? Can everyone take a moment to find the exits? They're in the back and on the sides, to the left and right of me. Few announcements I'll address at the end, but welcome our new elected officials, new members of the finance committee. And with that, we'll go to the opening motion.
Move that the following non-residents and non-registered voters be allowed to enter and address town meeting. Kate Federoff, town council; Keith Hickey, town administrator; David Walsh, wastewater superintendent; Jason Silva, community development director; Carol McCoy, finance director, town accountant; Tina Betty, human resource manager; Matt Pennella, conservation agent; Gloria Mitchell, assistant administrator; Mary Beth Lawton, director of elder affairs; Jill Prue, superintendent of schools; Christine Healy, director of business services, Silver Lake Regional School District; John Guvermont, Evergreen Cemetery president; Joe O'Brien, Evergreen Cemetery vice president.
Second.
And do we need to?
Liz Leyden.
Liz Leyden, town council. Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass as unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, before we get to the normal, as I've done since I've been here, I think my fourth year now, I have what's known as a consent agenda. It's public. It was posted outside, and this is my motion to expedite this meeting and address those matters that require action but tend to generate little to no debate. I'm going to put forward four separate consent agendas. Each consent agenda contains articles of the same subject matter. I will move each consent agenda containing multiple articles as a group in a single motion. I will read each article's number in the description. If anyone in the town meeting raises or states "hold," those items will be removed, and they may be debated in the normal course. Therefore, I will move the articles which have not been held in a single motion. So the first consent agenda I will read out is Articles Nine, the Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund Budget; Article Ten, Resolving Funds; Article Eleven, FY24 Transfer to Employment Liability Reserve Fund; Article Twelve, Transfer...
They can't hear you.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes.
I apologize. So I'm going forward with the consent agenda. This is moving articles that routinely pass in order, as I've just stated. I'll read each article number out, and I'll read the description. If there's no holds as I read the article, then we'll move them as one vote. So for example, I'm going to read Article Nine. If someone wants to debate or hold on it having the normal course, when I read it, yell out "hold." If I don't hear a "hold," I'll go on to the next one. If you want to hold Article Ten, say "hold." So the first article is Article Nine, FY24 Renewable Energy Enterprise Fund Budget; Article Ten, Resolving Funds; Article Eleven, FY24 Transfer to Employment Liability Reserve Fund; Article Twelve, Transfer to Other Post-Employment Health Insurance Liability Fund; Article Thirteen, Transfer to Stabilization Fund; Article Fourteen, Transfer to Capital Stabilization Fund; Article Fifteen, Transfer to Municipal Buildings Insurance Fund. Having heard no holds... Can I get a second?
No, you've got to move the, you've got to say, "having heard no votes," and move it.
Having heard no votes, I will move Articles Nine through Fifteen on the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass as unanimously. Second consent agenda is Article Five, Waste Department Enterprise Budget and Retained Earnings Appropriations; Article Six, Water Department Main Street Water Main Project; Article Seven, FY24 Waste Department Enterprise Budget and Surplus Revenue Appropriations. Having heard no holds, let's move to a vote. All those in favor of moving Articles Five, Six, and Seven as printed, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda number three. Article Twenty-Four, Kingston, Fund Kingston Superior Officers Association Fraternal Order of Police Large Zero-Six-Four Contract; Article Twenty-Five, Fund Kingston's Patrolman Association Fraternal Order of Police Large Zero-Six-Four Contract; Article Twenty-Six, Fund International Association of Firefighters' Local Two-Three-Three-Seven Contract; Article Twenty-Seven, Fund Lieutenant of Kingston Police Department's Agreement. Having heard no holds, let's move to a vote.
Second.
All those in favor of moving Articles Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six, and Twenty-Seven as printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the fourth consent agenda. Articles Thirty-Five, Amendment to General Bylaws, Chapter Four, Council on Aging; Article Thirty-Six, Amendment to General Bylaws, Chapter Four, Affordable Housing Trust; Article Thirty-Seven, Amendment to General Bylaws, Chapter Thirteen, Wetlands Protection Bylaw. So I have a hold on Number Thirty-Seven. I do not have a hold on Thirty-Five or Thirty-Six. So I'll move Articles Thirty-Five and Thirty-Six on the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Articles Thirty-Five and Thirty-Six pass unanimously. Article Thirty-Seven will be debated in the normal course. We're on the move. And who's presenting the next article?
All right. This is Article One, Prior Year Bills. I move the town transfer the sum of $7,501.32 from prior year's special articles identified in the warrant.
Seeing no, seeing, oh, no, you can go. Seeing, yes, seeing no one, would anyone like to be heard on this? Seeing no one at the microphones? I'll hold a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article Number Two.
Article Two, Supplemental FY23 Kingston School Budget. Move the town transfer $650,000 from free cash for the purpose of supplementing the Kingston School Department's FY23 operating budget. This article allocates funding to supplement a portion of the Kingston School Department FY23 budget shortfall.
Seeing no one approach the microphones, I'll move it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Does, just by a show of hands real fast, I can read off the board of selectmen and the finance committee's votes on that, but does everyone have it in front of them?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm not going to read those off. If it's, if it's contested, I'll point it out, but if it's all favorable votes, it's in front of you, so kind of slow me down from talking a little. I'll stop on that one. Go ahead.
Article Three, Supplemental FY23 Fire Department Budget. To see if the town will vote to transfer from unexpected articles the sum of $13,652.72 to supplement the FY23 Fire Department budget for the following projects or take any actions relative thereto. That was a little out of order. Move the town transfer the sum of $13,652.72 from prior year's special article identified in the warrant.
Can I get a second now?
Second.
Okay. Seeing no one approaching the microphones, I'll move this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mary, are you going to do Article Number Four?
Yes, I am.
Mary, before we get started, Mary's been on the finance committee and has been invaluable to everyone in this town, myself, her knowledge, what she brings from her job, and has been very supportive, but she's stepping down. She has college-age children, and she's, this is a commitment. She's not paid for it. She does it out of her heart and her love for the community, and I'd just like to take a moment and say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And hopefully coming back next year.
I'll be sitting out there instead of over here, but yes.
Carl said that too.
Yeah, that's true. All right. Here we go. Article Four. Move the town appropriate the sum of $52,454,230 to be expended for the operating budgets for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023, for personal services and for expenses as printed in the handout entitled Town of Kingston FY24 Summary Budget, and to meet such appropriation that the sum of $51,620,517 be raised and appropriated; the sum of $422,937 be transferred from water enterprise revenue; the sum of $311,950 be transferred from wastewater enterprise revenue; the sum of $79,326 be transferred from the septic betterment fund balance; the sum of $12,000 be transferred from the inspectional services revolving fund; and the sum of $7,500 be transferred from the municipal building insurance fund. All set?
Hold on. All right, well, the budget's been read. Seeing no one at the microphone, I'll move it to a vote. All those in favor?
I was going to...
Oh, you want to go? Okay.
I was going to give some remarks about, unless you guys are ready for a vote.
All ready, thank you.
All right. That is the easiest budget ever, $54 million.
Mary, we don't have a vote yet. Mary, hold on. All those in favor, as the budget printed in the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Article Eight.
Thirteen Oak Street, Kingston. I'd like to move to take Articles Forty-Seven and Forty-Eight out of order.
I already called for Eight. That's a problem. I can do it next if you like. I've already called for an article, so if you want to stand up after Eight, you can, I'll entertain your motion.
That's fine.
Thank you. I apologize.
Oh, no.
Move the town appropriate the sum of $12 million to pay costs of designing, constructing, equipping, and furnishing leaching fields and infrastructure to support the wastewater treatment plant and support the reduction of nitrogen levels in town, including but not limited to the construction and/or reconstruction of related pump stations, the extension of related sewer lines, the acquisition of any easements and land necessary to complete the improvements described in the warrant, and the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the selectmen is authorized to borrow this amount under and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-Four, Eight (14) and/or Chapter Twenty-Nine C, pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, of bonds or notes of the town therefore that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to contract for and expend any federal or state aid available for the project, and that all or any portion of the amount to be borrowed by this vote be borrowed through Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust for the affluent recharge site number three and sewer expansion, and any appropriate official or officials of the town are hereby authorized to execute any agreements that may be required in connection with any such loan. Okay, basically, this is to, an article to replace leaching fields that are currently 23 years old at the Indian Pond Country Club driving range. You all have a handout. Hopefully, you took it off the table. Basically, what it does, I'm just going to hit on key points of the, of the facts, and those are, there are no replacement fields available when the current leaching fields start to break down. The leaching fields have been utilized 365 days a year for 23 years. The leaching fields have not been rested in 23 years as there are no alternative fields, and approximately 2 billion gallons of affluent has been discharged to the leaching fields over 23 years. If the leach, if this article doesn't pass and the leaching fields fail, and being 23 years old, they are at a point that it's, we need to take it seriously, that they could be failing. I'm not going to say it's tomorrow. I'm not going to say it's two years from now. There is no timeframe. Typically, a leaching field of this magnitude can last 20 to 25 years. So if this does not pass at town meeting, what will happen is, we'll have to react to a situation rather than being proactive and planning on it now with state aid, which we've been approved for, a low-interest loan through the state, and that would be a year before we could even start construction if the site is, fails. So on the other side, I've listed the attempts that we've made in the past 10 years to be proactive. In 2011, we acquired a budding land to the Davis property. 2018, town meeting voted to acquire the Davis property in part for the leaching fields. Last year, the year before, we worked on getting all of the design done, and we're permitted by DEP to open up those fields when constructed. So basically, if it comes down to, we're looking for $11 million, $12 million to construct leaching fields for four tanks. It will require, some of the alternatives to that is, I've talked with legal counsel, and it says, "Leaching fields will be built for four tanks. The sewer commissioners will continue to work with legal counsel on merits of capacity allocation." Talked with legal counsel about the possibility of, in our rules and regulations, allocating specific gallons for specific reasons, most of them being environmental. And if I could, through the moderator, Kate, could you?
Sure. So if there's a necess, am I beeping there? If there is a necessary result to allocate the existing capacity of the fourth tank, you can theoretically do that. It might take some buy-in from DEP to do that. You would have to allocate between commercial and residential. 40B projects would likely be precluded from having that allocation prevent their development because of the, the rules that surround 40B, that most of the local regulations aren't applicable. The other thing that you would be concerned with is it would be viewed as improper moratorium, which would essentially just inhibit development, which is sort of a moratorium really on building permits. So there could be a risk of challenge there. Does that answer your question, Alene?
Yes. I just wanted everybody to be clear. So...
Can you explain the, the risk of the moratorium a little bit further?
Yeah, so some sewer moratoriums have been challenged because what it is viewed at in certain circumstances where there aren't environmental reasons for pushing it forward is that in fact it looks like just an ability to prevent further development in the town without saying so. So it's a sewer moratorium in sheep's, or a building moratorium in sheep's clothing essentially. And what the law provides is that people are allowed to develop their property unless there's some sort of reason not to. You would have to say that expressly that you are having a building moratorium without being a challenge by just simply saying it's a sewer moratorium. There could be an argument to say that because these leaching fields are, are failing, we need the capacity in the fourth tank because of the nitrogen environmental results that happen when you're, when you're releasing less well-treated effluent, you know, and it results in algae blooms and things like that in your ponds. So you could make that argument, and the question is, would the courts buy that argument? And it's, at this point, it's unclear. Does that make sense?
And if I could, part of this fourth tank, we've talked about it for the past year with the selectmen. We've done a presentation with our engineers that there is a nitrogen issue level in Kingston Bay. It's owned by Kingston, it's owned by Plymouth, and it's owned by Duxbury. And the town needs to come up with a plan to address that issue. Our private septic system properties will need to upgrade their plants, upgrade their personal systems to meet the new nitrogen levels. Part of this, as mentioned in the presentation, that the sewer system could be used as a tool to help meet those DEP requirements without requiring individual households to upgrade their septic systems.
I just, Sheila Vaughn, Southern Frank Street, Kingston, Mass. Just, I know that there's been a water moratorium right now from the water commissioners, and I just wanted to know how that would affect, would this affect this position right now, because obviously, I think people think if there's a water moratorium, then having a moratorium on the sewer as well would make it, no building happen right now in the town. But also how bigger, bigger investments like the, like Silver Lake would have its own wastewater treatment plant. So I just wanted to know how that, you know, I think people in town are kind of thinking, if we stop the leaching fields, we'll stop the building. So I just wanted to know if there was a feeling on that.
I, I don't know that I, I can say that one way or the other. I mean, if water commissioners aren't taking on any, I don't know what their moratorium really says, but if they're not taking on any additional projects because of limitations, then I would imagine that would mean that we could still build the, the leaching fields. We just wouldn't have any customers to pay for it. And then in time, the existing sewer customers would be paying when the system fails. Today, we know the dollars for that. Five years, next year, we don't.
Howland Lane. I'll get the mic on. That was, that was a great spirited debate between, amongst yourselves, but I think that the public deserves to ask questions about this. Mrs. Pierori, as you said at the Board of Selectmen's meeting on April 11th, if we build it, they will come. And I think that all, many of us are here in the room today because we don't want the building to continue. And the way that this article is written, this is not a moratorium on sewer. This is an expansion of leaching fields so that we can have more developments in town. That's what this article's about. And there are currently several developments that are in the pipeline, whether commercial or residential. And we just saw in Articles, you know, Two, Three, and Four today, that our budget increases are because of the current existing developments that have recently gone into town. We can't, this growth is not, not sustainable for Kingston to continue to build residential housing and residential developments in the form of 40B or what have you because we've expanded our leaching fields. And at all of your meetings, you know, you have constituents asking you, whether at the planning board, the Board of Selectmen, or the sewer commissioner, how can we stop this building? And what your reply should be is, vote no on this article because if we vote no on this article, then without the leaching field expansion, then we can't continue to allow developers to come into town. So this is not an article that says it's a moratorium on sewer. This is an article to not continue to expand the leaching fields to continue to allow the building. And what I do want to say in regards to sewer capacity, and if they build it, they will come. As a town sewer resident, my bills have increased to upwards of $600 over the last couple of years. They've regularly been between $250 and $300 for town sewer. On top of that, my family pays $384 a year for the sewer betterment, which was when our property was connected to the sewer line. Prior to us buying our property, we assumed the remaining portion of the betterment. So when, if these sewer lines are connected by anyone's property, you're required to buy into it, whether you want to or not. You're required to go from your $50 a quarter water bill plus, you know, pumping every few years to having town sewer. And it's not an option. And so I just want everyone to be aware that no matter how this article's written, it's not written as a moratorium. That legality could be challenged if it was. It's written as a, an expansion of leaching field which would allow for more development that we cannot control. Thank you.
I'd like to respond now.
As a sewer customer, as a sewer commissioner, it would be short-sighted for us to be concerned with, not being concerned with leaching fields that are 23 years old. Our responsibility to the sewer customers in the town of Kingston is uphold what we're required to do by law, and that's to maintain the infrastructure of a municipal sewer system. Will it bring development? Will it bring growth? That's up to the boards and committees. Again, Again, we do not authorize building permits. We don't vet projects. We are here, and the reason it says "expansion" is because it was tied to the overall plant expansion. That's how DEP looks at these leaching fields, as an extension of the original project that we're in the middle of, of expanding the plant. The leaching fields were a part of that. We had funding in the last round to do that. We were funded up to $28 million to do that. So, you know, and I just want to say, there was, there's been talk out there that Sacred Heart is connecting to municipal sewer. That's not a true statement. Sacred Heart has asked the sewer commissioners to manage a private system on their site, has nothing to do with sewer capacity. You can't get the sewer line from here to there. It's not going to happen for Sacred Heart.
Pine Dubois, 93 Elm Street in Kingston. I want to expand on what Elaine has been saying, and I want to support the sewer commission on this. We absolutely need additional leaching capacity. The existing one up at Indian Pond Estates is not without consequence. In fact, my pumps, my sump pumps in my basement on the side of the hill, that is quite a distance from there, on Elm Street, on the west side of Elm Street, are still pumping every five minutes. Why? Because of what is going into Indian Pond Estates, and I would say that it's not exactly being treated anymore. The, the nitrogen problem is not just a bay problem. The, the Jones River from Silver Lake, including Silver Lake, all the way to the bay, is nitrogen-loaded and, and a TMDL is required. TMDL stands for Total Daily Maximum Load. DEP will write that TMDL. The town of Kingston will have to comply with it. And if, and I don't really think that it's true that if we do this, there will be a boom in development in Kingston. Yes, people will want to tie to sewer. Developers will want to tie to sewer, but what Elaine said is true. We have a planning board, we have a zoning board, we have a conservation commission. The fact of our environment here is that we are loaded with water. We have more water than most places. We have tributaries, we have streams. We need to care about what goes into our septic systems and what gets into that water. If we don't have updated systems, and in fact, even the water department doesn't have, you know, that's a real problem for us. We should have, all of us, the greatest septic systems we can, and if we can't have a great septic system, we should tie to sewer. I'm considering that on Elm Street, because really, the water department belongs on sewer, and probably I do too, if you have that much water under your house, you know? And that means Elm Street up to the hill. If we don't do this, the, this is cheap compared to what it's going to be. So, I just ask that we really open our brains and not, not try to, you know, control the development of the future because we're afraid of it. We try to development properly, develop properly, because we're aware of our environment, we understand our environment, and we want to take care of our environment.
Hello, Ted. Yes, sir.
My name is Doug Gaboni, 45 Howens Lane. For the sake of not going through redundancy, I second pretty much everything Jeanie said. But my question is, in regards to Title V systems in private homes, how does that have any relevance to our current sewer system? Because you were talking about private septics, and I was just cur, how, curious how that relates nitrogen level-wise to what we're talking about here.
Well, as Pine said, DEP is going to be coming down with finalizing their rules and regulations to address the nitrogen issue. Sewer has helped that situation in Kingston, but Kingston's going to be told you have to, the nitrogen levels need to reduce in the town of Kingston by X. Without adding additional sewer plans to do that, then it's left to the private owners of septic systems. And the current septic systems they have will need to be upgraded to be able to treat nitrogen to the level that DEP is going to require. And I've heard numbers anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 to have that upgrade done to a private system.
Do you have another, anything else, sir?
I mean, I don't know if that necessarily answers my question, but, yeah, I, like I said, second what Jeanie says. We're at capacity, especially in South Kingston, with traffic. And let's face facts, the reason a bunch of us are here today is just because of future development. And while I'm for it, I mean, manifest destiny, we, we build houses, that's what we do, we're people. We don't have much more room, and especially as somebody down in Rocky Nook, I mean, we, just from traffic alone, I don't know how we're going to deal with any building. So, that's just where I'm at on this. So, hopefully, we get a note.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen, can you hold your applause, please? Board of Selectmen. Select Board, sorry.
Hello, Tyler Bouchard, 217 Parting Ways Road. I want to just loop in another angle on this, of a potential unintended consequences/collateral damage that if we don't pass this, because we just passed a very large budget, right? A very, very large budget. One of the ways that we can manage these large budgets in the future is commercial. We, a lot of people here are very nervous about 40Bs, about residential. I am too, absolutely. I think the state mandates are pretty horrendous. But with that, if we don't have capacity to expand into places like commercial that have a tax revenue, that doesn't, that doesn't put children in schools, that is a net positive for the town, the collateral damage could be very severe in the future. Because those are the things, those are some of the things that the town is looking to do. Other neighboring towns don't want any commercial because they, they live in their own little towns, and they pay a million dollars in taxes a year. We need to manage those budgets, so we need to manage our tax base. And one of the ways to do that is to have more commercial. If we can't expand sewer into certain areas, we're going to hogtie ourselves into a position where we can no longer deal as a business in a town to a tax base that we really need and want. Thank you.
I'm just, I'm just going to ask for new information now, so if you've got something that hasn't been said, please approach the microphone, but if it's to repeat, there's two sides in this argument, but, yes, sir.
Yeah. I mean, when it comes to Brad Randall, 10 Grace Beach Road, when it comes to sewer infrastructure, 23 years is not that old for a leaching field. This seems like infrastructure for development. And other towns don't want commercial because, you know, look at them all. We've had commercial in the past, how's it worked out? It consumes an enormous amount of land for little return long-term. So, I'm against this 100, 110%.
Thank you. Sir?
Bob Koska, 55 South Street, currently Water Commissioner. I think it's important for people to understand that the decision the water department made to put a moratorium on hookups had nothing to do with the future, had everything to do with the present. And from what I'm hearing from the sewer department, they're saying exactly the same thing. We're not talking about the future, we're talking about now. Currently, right now, the water department is out of compliance with recommendations from the state DEP. According to their regulations, we should be able to take our top water-producing well offline and have the rest of the wells provide enough water for the people in Kingston, pumping 16 hours a day or less. Currently, if our number-one water source is offline, all of the other wells would have to pump 24 hours a day. For anybody who understands how that equipment works and how wells work, that would deteriorate the wells very quickly. So, we're going to be needing to put in a new well, not to cover any of the new development, but simply to, to provide water for the people that are in town now. What I'm hearing from the sewer department is, if we don't do something about the current leaching fields, which are already right at the point where they should be decommissioned, then the entire sewer, sewer system will fail in the town of Kingston if you don't have leaching fields. So, in an effort to try to stymie development, and by the way, there are all sorts of ways that development can happen against our wishes, 40Bs, for example. These things can happen in spite of people not wanting growth and development. As far as I'm concerned, what, what the sewer department is asking for right now has nothing to do with future development. It has everything to do with providing the necessary foresight to make sure the infrastructure is in place to cover what we currently have.
Elaine, final word?
And, yes, and thank you. I just want to also say, we don't have the same advantage that the water department does of just, they've got existing wells. We can't turn off the municipal sewer system to 1,800 properties if this fails. That's the long and short of it. And, and I just want to make it perfectly clear, if this article doesn't pass, we will be addressing this again, but not with the luxury of being able to be proactive. We will be reactive in an emergency situation with 1,800 properties, and I'm one of them that will be affected if and when the systems fail. That's, that's simply what this is, and we're going to have to plan with the existing sewer customers to raise rates that haven't been raised in over 15 years, to pay for a capital plan that's going, that's going to have to be put in place. So...
Sir, I missed, I'm sorry, I didn't see you, yes.
Is there a microphone?
No, the microphone's fine. Oh, okay. Good morning.
Nice to meet you.
Good. State your name and your address, please.
Through the moderator. My name is Brian Donahue, 17 School Street, Kingston, 36-year resident of the town and one of the inaugural sewer commissioners. 23 years ago, I was standing here, begging for money, trying to explain what we're trying to do, and we're here. Want to add on to everything I think that's already been said, but this is part of a plan that was made, put together 25 years ago, actually. And as Elaine just said, you can't stop the sewage flow. It's impossible. So, let me take you a little bit, and Elaine, I mean, Pine, thank you for your comments, I was going to repeat those, the TMDL and all that. By way of introduction, a little bit more is, uniquely, I was the Director of Water Pollution Control for the state of Massachusetts. I was the guy who forced Kingston through a compliance edict to do what they did 25 years ago. My wastewater has been my business all along, for 50 years, so I know what I'm talking about. Let's take the position to get to the worst-case scenario, that you can't stop the sewage flow. One of the things that was built into this system was, we need a new leaching field to arrest the one that's presently before you. A leaching field is part of a biological system. Bacteria are in that field that complete the treatment process that's up at the dump. There's a lot of bacteria in there. They do the final treatment, but they do not disinfect the wastewater. That's taken care of in the groundwater as it goes through the rest of the soil, okay? We don't put chlorine in there. If you did, you'd kill everything. Chlorine kills everything. So, here we have with a tired leaching field, that's been known for a long time, that needs to be replaced. Back in the day, we went and made sure we had land for the second field, which is before you tonight, today. And let's presume that that field gets really tired, and next summer, breakout in the golf course at Indian Pond Estates happens. Well, now we have a real problem. We have sewage partially treated, shutting down the golf course, number-one suit. All the weddings that are going on because of this leaching field failure, all those people, Mr. and Mrs. Smith and their daughters and sons who are going to get married, we have to shut that down because the odor is terrible, because it's been failing. Andy Loise, you can see where I'm going with this. So, what we did, we built in when this situation, which we did plan not to have happen, happens. There are pump stations all around the town. There's one pump station that's near the end of the line at the Jones River, Route, in Main Street, Second Brook Street. When and if you had this situation, and you had a failure of the leaching field, you had to put the water somewhere. You're not going to just throw it into the ground, you're not going to be throwing it in the air, you're not going to spray it around, you're not going to shut the treatment plant down. So, you're going to have to deal with DEP under an enforcement action, and you're going to start discharging some portion of that water directly into the sewage, into the Jones River, because it has no other place to go.
30 seconds, sir.
So, suit number two is going to happen. You just shut down all the shellfish operators who were down in Duxbury Bay, who now are there because the water's clean. You have all kinds of issues start happening. I urge you to vote 100% to support this article, or these scenarios are going to start manifesting themselves next year, the year after, the year after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. This article, number eight, was Board of Selectmen, 3-2, favorable vote.
Just a quick question to Ms. Fiori. Dickaroot, 13 Oak Street. Isn't, in fact, there a leaching field under the transfer station?
Yes, leaching fields under the transfer station has a capacity of 125,000 gallons per day. Right now, we're discharging 500,000 gallons per day. So, it's not a replacement leaching field, it's an additional leaching field to supplement what we already have.
I just, just checking.
Thank you.
I'm going to take a vote now. Seeing no one at the microphones. Do you have something new, sir? Just new information?
Hi, Jim Franklin, 53 Winthrop Street. I, I understand the need for the leaching fields, right? I, I understand how leaching fields work. There's a couple of things I think we need to consider. One, I believe that, that the golf place was supposed to be using some of the effluent in their ponds, and, and I understand that right now, they're taking water out of the ground to fill their water features. I believe that that was built into the permitting process, and then for whatever reason, it just wasn't implemented. So, I think that doom and gloom is not the way to spin this thing. I completely agree that we need to improve infrastructure. I also agree that giving Carplanche to the sewer commission to just do $12 million worth of work in support of just creating capacity is going to come with unintended consequences, right? The people of the town don't really want these unbridled monster developments, right? We want controlled growth. So, as written, I don't think this article does enough to control the approvals when something comes in as a 100-unit building on a parcel that was previously undeveloped because it wouldn't park. So, from that perspective, I don't think that we should be approving this article this cycle. I think that it needs to go back to the drawing board, I think we should table it. And I think that if it comes back with certain stipulations that prevent the unintended consequences from just having extra cap, capacity, then this is definitely a viable and a worthwhile project. I just think in its current iteration, we should not be saying yes to this one. That's all I got.
All right. We're going to, we're going to move this to a vote, seeing no one at the podium. This was Board of Selectmen, a favorable vote, 3 to 2. Finance Committee, 5-0, and Capital Planning, a favorable vote of 3 to 2. All those in favor of Article 8 say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Counters?
Folks, it's great to see as many people as we have here. It's been a long time since we've had this kind of turnout, so it's fantastic. We did, we did have a situation with the cards, so I wanted to let the tellers know and everybody sitting next to you, there's both a red and an orange card, so you count both, red and orange.
Everyone in the back, if you're in a doorway, you got to come in if you want to vote. It's just too hard if you're moving around, so, can you just have a seat for the vote anywhere then if you want to stand up? I'll let the details, thank you for being here, police officers, keep the area. So, can you take your cards out, please? So, Kathy, you're just going to count that side, sir, you're going to count this table in the middle, sir, you're going to count this table on the left. All right, all those in favor, please hold out your red cards and raise them. Or orange cards, red and orange. Bruce, did you count the two ladies in the back in the doorway that wouldn't have a seat with their cards up? Or Kathy, did you count those?
That's what I was going to ask.
Okay, Bruce, did you count the two ladies in the doorway?
I didn't.
Okay, I'll count.
Okay, thank you. Please, next time, I need you to have a seat. It makes it difficult because we split the room for counting. You got them? You got them, right?
I got them.
Okay. What do you got?
I'm at 38.
How many you got?
60.
60?
60.
32.
32. And if you're opposed, can you take out your card and raise it? Can you please have a seat if you have a card? Gentlemen in the back, can you please be seated? We're trying to have a fair count here. It's difficult for the tellers. Any math people here?
1/30. 1/30. 1/24 opposed, it fails.
Can you explain why?
It requires a 2/3r majority vote, and it was almost a 50-50. Moving on to article number... What?
I beat you.
You got faster. I didn't say...
Did I get back on time?
You did.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, Dickaruda, 13 Oak Street, Kingston, Alex Dubuque, make a motion to move Articles 47 and 48 out of order.
So the, that's second, the bylaws require, it requires a majority vote to take the vote out of order. If you want it, you've got to get to a microphone. I don't know what that means. No, up there.
Doug Dondaro, 14 Copper Beach, I will vote to rescind what we just did on Article 8.
You can't do that.
Thank you.
Sorry, can you explain reconsideration?
Yes. In the bylaws, there is no reconsideration, per the bylaws at Kingston voted on. So eight fails. Dick, you moved to take 47 and 48 out of order?
Yes.
And we had a second. Who was the second?
I did.
Thank you. Explain.
These two articles address what the state calls a soil reclamation order, and what those are, for any of you that have been to the transfer station, if you notice, there's mountains growing over in the O'Donnell Sand and Gravel. That's reclaimed material.
No, no, hold on. Why do you want to take it out of order, is my question?
To take a vote now.
Okay. Any other reasons?
I don't need it.
Okay. So it, he's asking to take this out of order, the bylaws require, allow it. It requires a majority vote, it has a second. All in favor of moving Articles 47 and 48 out of order, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Guess I go sit down.
Yep. You know what? I'm going to count that in abundance of caution.
Really?
Yep, let's count it. Buzz, I only got you for two more. If you're in favor of taking it out of order, 47 and 48, please raise your orange or red cards high.
4 on 4.
25.
25.
It's to come to peer pressure.
I got 25, 31, and 19.
Was it 25 or 24?
25. Okay, you can put your cards down. All those opposed, can you put your cards up?
What has to fail? 10, next three.
13.
34.
43.
It fails. Who's presenting 16?
Move the town rescind the use of free cash in Article 25 of the 2022 Annual Town Meeting in the amount of $100,000.
Is this to return money to the town?
Yep.
I think that's, we can probably move that to a vote. Hold. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Town just made $100,000. It passes. So as they're approaching on 17, it's kind of on my own motion, just to keep it clear, it's going to be kind of three separate motions. It's going to be, 1 through 8 will be a majority vote, and then there's three projects that are proposed will be a 2/3r's vote, and then the projects 9 through 14 will be a 2/3r's vote. The floor is yours, sir.
Okay. Move the town appropriate the sum of $1,282,923 for the capital expenditure items 1 through 8 as printed in the warrant, and to meet this appropriation with the sum of $1,282,923 be transferred from free cash.
So again, we're just moving 1 through 8 right now because the majority vote. Seeing no one at the microphone, I'll, would you like to say anything else right now, sir? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Move the town authorize, under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 21(c), under the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen, the purchase of financing agreements for the acquisition of equipment for remounting and refurbishing of Ambulance 1 and Ambulance 2, the replacement of the 2001 brush truck, and the replacement of a 2012 one-ton dumpplow standard truck as printed in the warrant that may be acquired through the issuance of debt under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44. The term of such agreements not to exceed the useful life of the equipment as determined by the Board of Selectmen and authorize the departments specified in the warrant to enter into such agreements on behalf of the town, subject to the approval of an appropriation for the first-year payment of the agreements as printed in the next motion.
Can you briefly explain why this is here now?
Why what's here?
Why we're doing this as...
Ah, yes. So, this section of the article, sorry, let me go through my paperwork. We have several needs for capital items that, well, we're going to probably need them in a couple of years. With the issues in the supply chain and manufacturing, we are placing orders now for items that wouldn't be ready for two years. This is a serious concern. We cannot buy them the year we're going to need them. We have to put the orders in in advance. And the way, as I understand it, to do this is to purchase these with these lease agreements, so we don't have to use our cash now.
That being said, anyone want to be heard? Okay. This is a 2/3r's majority of the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Okay. Final motion of the article. Move the town appropriate the sum of $566,715 for the capital expenditures for lease purchases, items 9 through 14 as printed in the warrant, and to meet the appropriation, the sum of $566,715 be transferred from the Capital Stabilization Fund. Said expenditures to be under the direction of the departments named.
Seeing no one at the microphones, it's a 2/3r's majority of the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Number 18.
So Article 18, FY '24 Equipment Purchase Project Funding. And it is, move the town transfer the sum of $227,144.03 from free cash, the sum of $24,015.15 from the unexpected articles, here we go, as printed in the warrant, and the sum of $100,000 from overlay surplus from a total transfer of $351,159.18 to be expended for the purchase or projects 1 through 11, for various town departments as printed in the warrant, and to trade or dispose of any used equipment of those departments in the best interest of the town.
Seeing no one at the microphones, this is a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number 19.
Move the town accept the recommendations of the trustees of the Elizabeth B. Sampson Memorial Fund to appropriate a sum of $42,500 from the income of said fund to be expended for the purposes the trustees recommend as printed in the warrant.
I mean, nobody asked any questions, so...
We'll move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Majority vote, passed unanimously. Article 20, our distinguished clerk is going to present the motion.
Move that the town approve the report of the Community Preservation, I'm sorry. Move that the town approve the report of the Community Preservation Committee on the fiscal year '24 Community Preservation Budget, and to appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues, the sums printed in the warrant, to meet the administrative expenses and all of the necessary and proper expenses of the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year '24, and further, to, further to approve motions 1 through 9 and 11. The sums estimated for open space, historic resources, and community housing is printed in the warrant.
Seeing no one at the mic...
I'm sorry.
Seeing no one at the microphone, I'll move this to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with minimal opposition.
I'm going to now have Nathan Hedberg present for Article 10, which is just, because of different funding, it needed to be separated. Oh, I'm sorry, Pine Dubois is going to do 10.
Yeah.
So, Motion 10, move that the town appropriate from available Community Preservation Act undesignated funds a sum of $35,000 for an appraisal and a preliminary site assessment report for the purchase of land along the Jones River that is important to restoring and protecting the riparian corridor for wildlife and open space continuity as printed in the warrant and recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. So the only reason for the amendment is that the majority of the $35,000 will be the preliminary site assessment report, and it wasn't mentioned in the original motion. We were concerned about that, and so was the financial officer for the town. So we wanted to be explicit that not only will there be an appraisal, but there will be a site assessment to evaluate if there's any contamination or hazards on the property that we would have to know about before suggesting a public acquisition.
Seeing no one at the podiums, microphones, majority vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No opposition.
We did, 1 through 9.
Wait, what? That's why I'm not following. We just voted that entire article?
Yes, we combined the whole, and I read it that way.
Oh, I missed that.
Wow, I did too.
Do you want, does anyone, well, it's already voted. Is someone challenging that as a point of order? Did no one understand what we just did?
Did everyone understand we voted 1 through 9 as the projects? We just numbered them? It would have been easier if it was done that way, 1 through 9 and 11. Does everyone understand that?
Yes.
Correct. Does that change your vote? Okay. Would anyone like to, just as a point of order, reopen and revote this?
No.
Board of Select, Finance Committee? Anyone opposed? Now's your time. Seeing no opposition, we're going to move on.
We should have just, we could have just taken one motion on the entire warrant.
No, it's different sources, it was...
All right. Article 21, consolidation and change from elected to appointed treasurer collector position. Move the town, will, move that the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit the home rule petition to the General Court for special legislation to convert the treasurer and collector's positions from elected positions to a single appointed position as printed in the warrant, and to authorize the town administrator to approve amendments which are within the scope of the general public objectives of said petition.
Did we take the motion 11, Article 20?
Yes, that was the...
We did 1 through 9 and 10.
No, we did 1 through 9 and 11. And then Ms. Pine did 10.
Good.
Go ahead.
Great, awesome, thank you. This article converts the positions of treasurer and collector from independently elected positions to a single appointed position, making the position more professionalized and more consistent with generally accepted government operations. A lot of communities throughout the Commonwealth have, have made this move to go from an elected position as the treasurer and collector, and then also combine them into one office. So, the idea would be, we would combine them, the elected position would term out after the collector's position in two years, and after the treasurer's position in three years. And at that point, that job would then be up, as any other department head job would then... then be up in town for consideration from anybody. The treasurer's position and collector's position, we've been extremely, extremely fortunate as a town to have great elected officials that have run those offices in the past. And when I say fortunate, I mean lucky, 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 because it's a very serious position, the treasurer. And towns are starting to move in this direction for it to be an appointed position due to the fact that not every town, especially town of 14,000, has someone that is willing to run for that type of office. Right now, we are fortunate to have somebody in that position, and we've had people in that position as well, that know what they're doing and know how to manage the office. It's not something, in my opinion, it's not in the best interest of the town moving forward over the next decades or wherever along we're all here, to leave that up to an election. And that sounds like a scary thing. And that's one of the reasons why it's failed in the past. The reality is, when we open this position up to outside of the town of Kingston, we open ourselves up to talent, a talent pool that is greater than in just the 14,000. And although we've been fortunate in the past, this is a stopgap to make sure that we're not in a position in the future that could really harm the fiscal future of the town of Kingston.
Would anyone like to be heard?
Jean Coleman, Twenty Howland's Lane. Essentially, this would just remove our right to vote for these positions, and it would then, if it's an appointed position, it would be in the hands of the town administrator, who is appointed by the five members of the Board of Selectmen, and yada, 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 yada. And essentially, it would become more politicized in Town Hall than to leave it to the voters now. And I think our Board of Selectmen can agree that, to this point, we have not been dumb enough to elect somebody that's not qualified for these positions. So, I think as the article's written, since we now have the same person in both of those positions, I think we would be wise to see what happens in regards to combining the salaries of those positions or working with the Board of Selectmen. And I'd like to see, from an outsider's perspective, more collaboration to work to combine this position, that it's not going to threaten the current person that we voted for now twice. So, with that said, I would be against this article as written right now. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Tricaharich, Five Post Court. I am for this, because I would like to ensure that whoever is in that position is not a popularity vote, but an actually a vote with, you know, that has the criteria to meet the requirements of this very important job. So, I think this should be something that's vetted, and not just something that's voted on because you like this person. This is a really important job. They handle your money. They should know what they're doing. They should have qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Good morning. Jean Landis Naumann, eighty-four Wolf Pond Road. Having served on the Town Government Study Committee in twenty eighteen, twenty, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, and then as chairman of the Implementation Committee, this was a recommendation that we offered to the town many years ago, because we foresaw the need for professional skills in this position. We just passed a budget that exceeds fifty-two million. We are a fifty-two-plus-million corporation. I am concerned that we leave it up to whomever steps forward to serve in this position, whether or not they have qualifications, to handle fifty-two million dollars. They have a serious role in how our money is invested, how it's handled, and I really urge the body to consider hiring someone with the necessary experience and qualifications. I appreciate the people who have stepped forward in the past and served, and I agree with Mr. Bouchard, we have been extremely lucky. Our luck may be running out. So, please vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dorothy McFarland, seventeen Whopping Road. I would like to separate the vote on combining and appointing.
I don't, I don't understand.
As opposed to electing.
You're trying... Ma'am, I'm gonna have to rule that out of order after consulting with legal counsel. So, the issue is, I don't think there's proper notice to know that we're gonna create a dual role of appointed positions, of elected positions. So, I don't think there's been notice, especially to the people who decided not to come to town meeting, even though they should be here. So, it's either gonna fail, or it's gonna pass as written.
Carol McCoy, Finance Director. In my past employment, I worked for a CPA firm where we went in on a temporary basis to either assist or fill in for elected positions for treasurer and collectors. And I can tell you, in some of the instances in the towns that I worked for, it was very scary, yeah, that's a good word, for some of the people that had been elected. Again, you've been very lucky in the people that you've elected and the people that have run for election. But coming from experience, coming from filling in for these positions, I would suggest definitely going for an appointed. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard? All right, yes. Okay.
This article or this proposal has certainly been brought before this body a couple of times, and it has been unsuccessful. During that time, we've been fortunate, as we've heard today, that we have had folks serve in those capacities, in those offices, and have served us well. However, to make a statement about, let's see and wait and see how things work out, is really an irresponsible statement when we're talking about a fifty-four-million-dollar operation, a community in which we all live and pay our taxes, and we want to be sure that every one of our offices is staffed by highly qualified, highly trained, highly vetted employees who serve in these capacities. Serving as the treasurer and collector of our community is a very crucial role in the fiduciary responsibility of the town of Kingston. Not being able to check, do a background check on a person who's going to hold that role is deficient in our hiring process. By having a combined and appointed position, and the key is appointed, you have the ability of doing all sorts of credential checks, exposing yourself to a wider range of qualified candidates beyond the borders of the town of Kingston. We've talked about this before, we've talked about it at Finance Committee meetings, and it is time that the town of Kingston really consider moving forward with combining this position, and more specifically, appointing this position, so that we know that we have done our level best to get the best candidate to serve in this important fiduciary capacity. Thank you.
Seeing no, seeing no one else at the microphones, I'll move this to a vote. It's a majority vote. It was favorable by the Board of Selectmen, four to zero, Finance Committee, two, one, one. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with minimal opposition. Our clerk is gonna step down for this one, because this next article affects him, and we have someone stepping in. Ms. Morrissey.
Did everybody, was this handout at the table? So, does everybody have this?
I don't know.
All right.
That was inserted.
It was inserted, so everybody has this? Okay, all right.
Say good morning, can you identify yourself?
Good morning, Jenna Morrissey, twenty-five Crescent Street, Assistant Town Clerk.
Thank you.
Jenna Morrissey, twenty-five Crescent Street, Assistant Town Clerk. Can you hear me?
Article twenty-two.
Okay. Move the town set the salaries for elected officials as of July first, twenty twenty-three as follows. Forty-six thousand, six hundred, six dollars for collector, forty-six thousand, six hundred, six dollars for treasurer, and eighty-six thousand, four hundred, ninety-six dollars for town clerk. And further, move the sum of seven thousand, six hundred, sixty-four dollars be raised and appropriated for said salaries, and that the town accountant be authorized to allocate such sums to the appropriate operating budgets.
Did everybody follow that?
You guys are, there was a...
It should be twenty-two thousand, forty-four. We didn't fix that.
Oh, instead of, do I, do you want me to read the whole thing, or just the correction?
Correction.
Okay. The sum has been changed from seven thousand, six hundred, sixty-four dollars to twenty-two thousand, forty-four dollars. So, move the sum of twenty-two thousand, forty-four dollars be raised and appropriated for said salaries.
Want to explain?
I would be happy to explain. This article sets the salaries, the compensation for our now, for our elected officials, the collector, the treasurer, and the town clerk. The town clerk's salary for FY twenty-four is being recommended at eighty-six thousand, four hundred, and ninety-six dollars, and the salary for the now combined collector-treasurer is being set at ninety-three thousand, two hundred, and twelve dollars. We've simply split it fifty-fifty between the two budgets, but the salary would be ninety-three thousand, two hundred, and twelve dollars. Any questions?
Would anyone like to be heard?
Okay, great.
We'll move it to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Great job.
Move that the town vote to amend the wage and personnel bylaw, including the classification and compensation schedules, A, B, and C contained therein, as printed in the document entitled Proposed Town of Kingston Wage and Personnel Bylaw with FY twenty-four Compensation Schedules, in the effect of July one, twenty twenty-three. Further amended the wage and personnel bylaw, including the classification and compensation schedules, A, B, C contained therein, as printed in the document entitled Proposed Town of Kingston Wage and Personnel Bylaw with FY twenty-four Compensation Schedules, and that the sum of sixty-one thousand, four hundred, and forty-one dollars be appropriated for this purpose, and to meet this appropriation, to fund the FY twenty-four salary increases, the sum of forty-eight thousand, zero, forty-nine be raised and appropriated, the sum of six thousand, six ninety-six be appropriated from water revenue, and the sum of six thousand, six ninety-six be appropriated from wastewater revenue, and to authorize the town accountant to allocate such sums to the appropriate operating budget. This is the wage and personnel article. We had a very intense compensation study done last year, and as a result of the compensation study, positions were moved, salaries were increased, and this is the summary.
Would anyone like to be heard? Seeing nobody, I'll move to a vote. Those all, all, excuse me, let me get my tongue back. Those all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Article twenty-eight, which is fund Kingston Town Employee Labor Union Contract. Move the town raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-one thousand, three hundred dollars to fund the first year of a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Kingston Town Employee Labor Union Contract and the town of Kingston.
Anyone like to be heard? Move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Article twenty-nine is fund Kingston Town Employee Clerical Union Contract. I move the town raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand, two hundred dollars to fund the first year of a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the Kingston Town Employee Clerical Union Contract and the town of Kingston.
Anyone like to be heard? Seeing nothing, I'll move for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Jared Wakus, fifteen Village Path. Move the town to appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand to be transferred from the Waterways Improvement Funds for the purposes outlined in the warrant.
Would anyone like to be heard?
I can give some details.
What's that?
I can give further details if you need.
Would anyone like to hear more? Move to a vote. Those all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Article thirty-one, increase property tax exemption for...
Did you identify yourself?
Oh, yeah.
As our newly-elected board member?
Right. Eric Crone, forty-three Longwood Circle. Article thirty-one, increase property tax exemption for seniors and veterans. Move the town vote to increase the amount of the local property tax exemption for seniors and veterans provided for under the provision of Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-one C, and Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five N, from seven hundred and fifty to one thousand dollars.
Would anyone like to be heard? Move to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Hello, are you, sir?
Michael Martin, eighteen Prospect Court, from the Board of Assessors. Move that the town vote to reduce the rate of interest that accrues on property taxes deferred by eligible seniors under Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-one A, third paragraph, subparagraph, which reduce the rate and shall apply to taxes assessed for any fiscal year beginning on July first, twenty twenty-three, or after.
Would anyone like to be heard? All right, let's move to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thirty-three.
Michael Martin, eighteen Prospect Court, Board of Assessors. Move to see if the town will vote to increase the gross receipts that seniors may have in the prior calendar year to be eligible to defer property taxes under the same Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Clause forty-one A. That'll increase the household limit.
Would anyone like to be heard? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to submit a home rule petition to the General Court for special legislation to establish the duties and responsibilities of the town administrator as printed in the warrant, and to authorize the town administrator to approve amendments which are within the scope of the general public objectives of said petition. Because we have no existing bylaw or special legislation laying out the duties and responsibilities of the town administrator, there is a lack of consistency from one Board of Selectmen to the next, and from one town administrator to the next. The proposed special legislation that is before you today, for your consideration, details the necessary qualifications and term of the appointment, the powers and duties of the role, the process for appointing an acting town administrator, if and when necessary, and the process for removal. In summary, rather than relying on the results of contract negotiations, by enacting this legislation, we will clarify the expectations of the... legislation, we will clarify the expectations of the role and scope of the Town Administrator, and will finally have the consistency that we have lacked.
Yes.
I'd like to make an amendment to this article.
Okay. You're gonna have to reduce it to writing.
It's inviting.
Okay.
Should I bring that up, or should I talk about it?
You can read it.
Okay, so I'd like to move to amend Article thirty-four by adding the following link... Oh, I didn't say my name.
Oh, okay.
Janet Stanford, fifty-three Evergreen Street. Move to amend Article thirty-four by adding the following language at the end of Section three B. Such appointments when made shall become effective on the fifteenth day following the day on which notice of the appointment is filed with the Board of Selectmen, unless the Board of Selectmen shall within that period by a majority of all its members vote to reject such appointment.
Can I just have a copy of that now?
So... Can you hear me? Okay. So what it reads is... It reads as follows: Such appointments, when made, shall become effective on the fifteenth day following the day on which notice of the appointment is filed with the Board of Selectmen, unless the Board of Selectmen shall, within that period, by a majority vote of all its members, vote to reject such appointment. So essentially, what it's doing is creating a veto power by the Board of Selectmen of the Town Administrator's appointments. Be advised, too, that this was in the draft, the initial draft that I believe was posted on the website and was subsequently removed at a later date.
So we discussed this in one of our Board of Selectmen meetings, whether or not the Board should have veto power of the Town Administrator hiring new employees. So this amendment, if I'm explaining it correctly, Janet, this amendment gives the veto power back to the Selectmen.
Yeah, can I... Can I talk about this now?
Please.
Okay. I'm just gonna tilt that a little bit. Okay, so currently, the Board of Selectmen, they do at this... At their Selectmen meetings, they vote to approve. You know, someone will say, this... This person is selected as a new hire, and the Board will vote. And I like that idea to continue. So this, as Kim said, is just putting that language back in. I didn't make up this language, it was already there. And I think that the BOS should have the power to say yes, you know, to reject someone, because, I hate to say this, but in the past, we've had some TAs that some people were not very fond of, let's say, and they didn't think they were making the right decisions. So if a TA... And this is no reflection on Mr. Hickey. But if a TA selects someone, and, you know, we don't let anyone say, we're not letting the Board of Selectmen have any ability to reject that person. And, you know, we elect the Board of Selectmen because we want them to really be running the town as much as possible. So why would we take this power away? I... I don't see any reason to take it away. Most of the time, they're gonna approve people. But if there's something, you know, if there's any... Sorry, I get nervous talking. You know, if there's any... I forget what it's called, when you have relatives, you know, you're trying to get relatives into positions? Nepotism, thank you. If there's any nepotism. Just anything. If we have a TA that we really don't agree with... Because, you know, the thing is, firing people is really hard, too. Once you get... Once a TA gets someone in, it's hard to get someone out. You get someone out, then you open up to lawsuits, possibly. So I think the BOS should have the right, on extreme instances or just whatever, to say no for anybody that's gonna get hired.
Is there a second on this?
Second.
Okay. Would someone else like to be heard on... This is the... This is for the amendment. This isn't whether to amend the motion.
Paul Gallagher, eight Longview Drive. I wanted to speak to this because I'm sitting up at my desk, and we just spent over a hundred million dollars. And we combine two positions, Treasurer-Collector, because we need professionalism. We have a Town Administrator that the Board of Selectmen appoints. His or her job is to run the day-to-day operations of the town. In the hiring process, we post the... Post the job opening. We go gather all of the resumes, and as department heads, we decide this person would be best for my department, is the most qualified for my department. And with the Town Administrator's help, we get that person hired. Why would we not think that the Town Administrator should have that position, that opportunity, when it's his job? His job is to be a full-time job, a full-time Town Administrator, running the day-to-day operations. And as we grow and become more professional, we need someone to make those decisions. If I wanted to hire someone, I'd do that entire process, I'd go to him and say, this is my selection, and the Board of Selectmen, who meet every two weeks, could decide two weeks later that they don't want that person. Well, what is it that they know, serving in a part-time position, more than the person that's actually gonna be working with them? That's really what it comes down to. You need to give the Town Administrator... We should be headed towards a charter. We should be moving towards a charter to give people the more responsibility to do what they're supposed to be doing, to be... To be working on what... How much they should be, you know? It just... It just doesn't make sense. We're trying to move forward to be professional. Why do we need to wait two weeks to decide if the Board of Selectmen doesn't like that candidate? Well, if the department head thinks it's the best candidate, and the Town Administrator thinks it's the best candidate, why do we need to wait for authorization from the Board of Selectmen? It's time to start giving the Town Administrator more authority so that we can run the day-to-day operations smoothly on a daily basis. Thank you.
Select Board. This is just on the motion to amend still?
This is on the motion to amend, and I'm very clear in the fact that I do not want this amendment to go through, as we hire, and I will say, Paul did a great job, I was gonna say more, but I do want people to know that we... We as Selectmen, yes, we have to look at things, and we have to understand things, but we... We appoint the Town Administrator. That's our job, is to appoint a Town Administrator. We have amazing department heads that come through. People are vetted for their positions in these job descriptions, and they go up like any other job. You know, if you think about any other job, we're not just throwing Joe Schmo into a position. These people have to have qualifications, and they have to be able to do the functions of the job through the job description that they have. And we have amazing department heads, and we have committees that hire people, and then on top of that, the Town Administrator is there. I am putting very much consideration on the department heads that we have hired, and the Town Administrator that we have hired, to do the... To do that function. Yes, as Selectmen, I think it's great that I read off that a person is getting hired, but I have done the due diligence to know that I believe that my department heads and my Town Administrator have made the best decision for that person to have that position, because that's their job. And I don't want to micromanage department heads and a Town Administrator. I definitely want to be informed as a Selectman, but I believe that our department heads and our Town Administrator need to have that autonomy to be able to hire the best person for that position. So to put that into our hands and to be able to veto something, where we have amazing department heads and a Town Administrator to do those things, and committees to hire people, I don't believe that we should be putting that back in.
Would anyone else like to be heard on the motion to amend?
Hello, Susan Woodworth, one thirty-six Grove Street, also your Director of Parks and Recreation for the past twenty-four years. In addition to what everybody has said here, as a department head, the other challenge by eliminating... By moving this motion for... Or the amendment forward is productivity and efficiency. We continue to wait for all of those opportunities for different meetings, and again, as people have said, we hired somebody, we have a great Board of Selectmen who also is part of that process. It puts a great strain on all the departments and all the functions that all of you are accustomed to having. Sometimes if we wait, it could be more than a month, it could be six weeks, that puts a great strain on our department and all the functions that we have. So I vote, I would ask you to not approve this amendment.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to... Oh, yes?
We did start with this in the initial language, and the Board, as a whole, decided to take this language out, because at the end of the day, we're responsible for making sure that the Town Administrator's doing a good job. If something were to happen where someone was hired who shouldn't be, that's more of a performance issue that we would need to deal with. So just keep that in mind, that this allows the Town Administrator to do his job, and allows the department heads to hire and fill empty positions quickly and better.
Anyone else on the motion to amend? Something new? New information? Come on down.
Hi, Valerie Mossard, one Schofield Road, and also a town planner. As a department head, I think it's... Really would diminish the capacity of the town in terms of competitiveness. It's very difficult in the hiring field now to get an applicant, and to further have them not know whether or not they'd be superseded during the appointment process is something that would render us even less effective in hiring.
Anyone else with new information, just to amend? Yes, sir?
Jim Sewell, fifty-one Indian Pond Road. I'm the interim chairman of the Wage and Personnel Committee, and we just went through a big process on a compensation study that the town got a compact grant for that took about, oh, six months to implement, especially with the help of the Town Administrator, and also with the Human Resources Director, Tina. So each one of these jobs has to go through a process of a job description, they get rated, then they have what's called a JAQ, which is part of the compensation study, and then the job's ranked in terms of its pay grade. All that's done to facilitate what the Town Administrator has to do in terms of finding the right person. We give them the tools. So to further add the Selectmen into the process after they've already created this outline, to me, doesn't make any sense. So I think we ought to just, you know, entrust our Town Administrator to follow it. I agree with what the Select Board did, and I oppose the amendment.
Anyone else with new information as to the amendment only? I'm gonna take a vote on... All those in favor of amending Article thirty-four? Article thirty-four, say aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion to amend fails. Would anyone like to be heard? I'm sorry. There's three people, so I'll let those three people speak as to the original article, and then we'll take a vote.
Okay, Elaine Fiori, sixty Cold Street. I just want to make... This is a very comprehensive article, it's in-depth, there's a lot to digest. And to Mr. Gallagher's point, this is a charter. This is changing the governmental structure of the Town of Kingston, and that's evident by the motion that says, "Submit a Home Rule Petition to the General Court for Special Legislation to Establish the Duties, etc." This is special legislation which overrides Mass. General Law in some instances. There's a lot of shals in this packet. For example, shall supervise and direct the administration of all departments, agencies, etc. But we have enterprise funds, and the responsibility of Water and Sewer Commission is, in addition to Board of Health and the assessors, we have duties inherent to Mass. General Law that this, because it says shall, would override. Again, we have... The C, Town Administrator Shall Fix the Compensation of All Town Employees, etc., but not limited to... Including but not limited to the Wage and Personnel Bylaw in Committee. There's more questions than not. Does that mean the Town Administrator would set salaries outside of Wage and Personnel Bylaw? Then we get to G, The Town Administrator Shall Be Responsible for Maintenance and Repair of All Town Buildings and Facilities. What does that mean to the enterprise funds? There's no mention in here of excluding enterprise funds. It excludes the fire chief and the police chief, but not the enterprise funds. And we can go on with J, The Town Administrator Shall Negotiate Contracts. Contracts are typically negotiated by those departments affected with the contract, vetted by council, vetted by accounting for funds, and then discussed with the Town Administrator. Town Administrator... K, Town Administrator Shall Be Responsible for Purchasing All Supplies and Material. Is that as the Chief Procurement Officer? Or does that mean the daily operations of, again, the enterprise funds? M, Subject to Applicable Law, The Town Administrator May at Any Time Inquire Into the Conduct of Office of Any Officer-Ep employee. That's just generally speaking, I don't understand what that means. P, The Town Administrator Shall Publish on the Town's Websites All Vacancies, etc. Review and Recommend Candidates for All Appointments to be Made by the Town Administrator, Board of Selectmen, or Moderator. Again, the enterprise funds by Mass. General Law have their own responsibilities. And the fourth one, Acting Town Administrator, it says, The Town Administrator Shall Designate a Qualified Town Administrator. We have an Assistant Town Administrator. If there's any language, I think it should say, it goes, "The Assistant Town Administrator." So there's a lot of questions on how the future operation of enterprise funds will be managed. I think this is a lot to digest. Having said all of that, I would like to make a motion to table this, to have further discussion on what the impact of this is to the other departments in town that shell encompasses.
Second. Okay, that's an appropriate motion.
Can I respond to that before you take a vote on it? Some of the questions?
I gotta see if it's debatable.
Okay. Non-debatable, non...
Non-debatable. So this isn't... This motion's not debatable. So it has a second, it requires a two-thirds to table this, so we wouldn't vote on it. It would just... In essence, it's almost like a no vote, but it... In essence, we're just not gonna vote on it. If it passes. So we need two-thirds, and this article will not be voted on at town meeting today.
Can you define what a yes vote is?
If you vote... So a two-thirds votes will table it. So all those in favor would say aye to table it. If you're opposed, the motion will go forward as printed. So all those in favor of tabling as amended Article thirty-four, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'm gonna call that a two-thirds majority with minimal opposition, and Article thirty-four is, in essence, tabled. Under construction. Thirty-seven, I believe. Yes. Just state your name for the record.
Sure.
And your address.
Megan Hickey, forty-two Winthrop Street. Move the town vote to amend its town general bylaws by adding Chapter twenty-six as printed as an attachment to the warrant. Nope, sorry. That's Roland. Move the town vote to amend Chapter thirteen of the town's bylaws, Wetland Protection Bylaw, by making changes as printed in the attachment to the warrant. Can I address something while I'm up here?
You can address the article.
Can I address the lies that were printed about it?
Okay. Hold on, I'll address that. When we showed up here today, there was a handout. Vote no on Articles thirty-seven and thirty-eight, they go too far. That wasn't sent prior. Anything on it is one person's opinion, it's not the opinion of the Board of Selectmen, it's not the opinion of the Finance Committee, it's not the opinion of anybody but the person, non-resident, who showed up and handed this out. So you can take it for whatever you want out of it. People show up and they hand things out, it wasn't under scrutiny of anyone from the town, it was provided today. So you can take whatever information you want from that, or as little information you want from that. I've addressed it.
Can I make a personal point about it? That this is now a second time that articles have been...
No, you can address the article. Just address the article. If there's response, you can answer.
No, no. Can I invite Matt to address the article? I moved it. Yeah?
We have a second.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Matt Pinella, Conservation Agent. So I think everybody knows that our local wetlands protection bylaw is more protective than the State Wetlands Protection Act, and that's important when we review projects in town, unfortunately.
Can you get closer to the mic?
Can't hear me? Sorry, I'll crouch down. I think everybody knows that the State Wetlands Protection Act is less protective than our local bylaw. We have a good local wetlands protection bylaw in town, but upon starting this job roughly two years ago, I realized it was not without errors. It's a little bit confusing, it has some parts that weren't correct, and was not the easiest thing to implement for ourselves, or for the public, or people looking to apply. So we've been working for, at this point, just about two years on revisions. The way that process went was we used the template created by the Mass Association of Conservation Commissioners as a starting point, because they have some lawyers that put together a really good document that provides really good protection for the local wetlands, but it's really easy to understand, it's easy to implement. So that was our starting point, and from there, we added in some of the language that we already had in our bylaw, so that there were not a lot of major changes there. Some of the additions that this new bylaw provides is, it adds some just small sections of language that make, decisions that the commission makes more defensible, discusses things like cumulative impacts. One of the important things it does, and I think some people will remember that we've had a few coastal development projects come through lately, and there was big decision on whether the commission could discuss the projected impacts of climate change and sea level rise. This bylaw defines that the commission can take research-based climate and sea level rise predictions into account during permit review, which I think everyone should care about. There's a lot of, you know, potential coastal issues in town that we should be thinking about before approving developments. One of the other things it does, it extends a butter notification from 100 feet to 300 feet, which, again, I don't think will make the filing process for any one person too onerous. It's not going to raise the costs terribly, but what it's going to do is it's going to make sure if there's a project going in near your house, you're going to find out about it. One of the biggest things we heard from people-
So I'm going to stop for a minute. If you're not a resident of the town, you need to leave, unless you were pre-approved to be down here. Thank you, I'm sorry for the interruption.
No worries. So one of the things that that does, we had a lot of feedback from Kingston residents when we do have certain filings that they didn't get notified because the butter notification was only 100 feet. So again, that would extend to 300 feet, make it more likely that you would hear about a project near you, less surprises for residents. One of the other things it does, it extends jurisdiction by 100 feet in cases where more than 10 feet of fill or excavation is proposed. And the idea behind that, it provides additional protection for wetlands when something like a large-scale earth removal or fill project is proposed. And again, I don't find that that over-regulates those projects. What it does is it provides, it sort of ties up a loophole that allows, you know, a project that will likely impact wetlands to, you know, have a little bit more of a buffer there, or at least a little bit more oversight. So the gist of this is that the Conservation Commission is listening. We've had a lot of feedback from residents over the last couple of years about the development process, and about how the process works, and what the commission, you know, can and can't do when they're reviewing projects, and we find that this amendment is not something that's going to make major changes to the average Kingston resident. All it's going to do is provide better protection for our wetlands, and it's going to make it easier for my office, the Conservation Commission, and anybody who's filing for a wetlands permit to understand what they're doing.
I'll open it up for debate. Yes.
Peter Opachinsky, 50 Old Sawmill Road, been a resident of Kingston for better part of 50 years, and my feeling on this article is that it just goes a little bit too far. You're going to discourage new business from coming into Kingston. And if you don't have new development and new growth, it's going to mean higher taxes for everybody in town. And I think this article is going to basically say Kingston is closed for business. Part of the rural character and attraction to Kingston, I think, is the number of cranberry bogs that we have in town, and this article would make it very difficult for cranberry growers to either expand their farms, build new bogs, renovate bogs, expand water holes when there's drought issues like we had, especially last summer. And I think the unfairness of this article, it's really geared towards one particular landowner, and it's backed by a lot of out-of-towners with deep pockets. So if you're not allowed to, say, develop a cranberry bog, and you have a certain acreage of undeveloped land in Kingston, what are the landowners' options? And with, if you regulate them so much, one way around it is to go with a 40B development. It's, it bypasses a lot of the rules and regulations that would be in place in Kingston. And I don't think that's what anybody in this room would really want to see, is someone that has a large tract of land, for some reason can't put up a cranberry bog or something like that with a good use that's beneficial to the town, and you get a 40B cram down your throat. That impacts the schools, the town services, it's just not what we want in town. So I think the rules and regulations that have been in place in Kingston for years have worked well. You've got board oversight, you've got the Select Board, you've got the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and no one can just go in and start digging materials to build a cranberry bog without a certain level of approvals. You've got DEP oversight.
Thirty seconds.
So my feeling is that this is just overregulation that's going to basically hurt business coming into town, and I think it'll impact everybody's taxes eventually if this article passes. Thank you.
Do you want to address that?
Just to speak to the cranberry side of that, the cranberry industry and agriculture in general have pretty extensive exemptions with the Wetlands Protection Act and with our local bylaws. So I don't expect that this is something that's going to prevent cranberry growers from going about their business. As far as this being something that's backed or sourced by wealthy out-of-towners, I will say I'm an out-of-towner, I'm a resident of North Carver, I'm not wealthy, I am a town employee who cares very much about the town of Kingston now, because this is my professional integrity at stake, is how I and my board handle wetlands protection in town. So, thank you.
Yes.
Julianne Nemus Walsh, 27A Rocky Nook Ave. Thank you for explaining that to us, but I do have a question, it's very simple. I just need you to explain to me for my own educational purposes, is what does incremental activities significant or cumulative effect mean?
There's a few different ways of looking at that. One of those ways is that an activity that you're doing in small increments on your property over time will add up to have a detrimental effect on the wetland resource areas. Another thought on that is looking at an area and looking at, so let's say, one person puts a pool in, there's an effect there. But let's say now two people put a pool in, three people, now 10 people put a pool in, and all of them have a discharge that's flowing towards wetlands. I'm just using pools as an example off the top of my head. It's the commission being able to look at the potential additive effects of development in that area, to that particular wetland.
And would this pertain to residential and commercial at the same level, or would there be different rules for each?
Everything in the bylaw essentially is the same, whether you're a homeowner, or a commercial, or a large-scale developer. The differences would come typically in the types of projects. So homeowners doing a small project on their property, we have what's called the administrative review process, which is a simple, cheap way to get projects permitted without having to go through, you know, filing an NOI or an RDA. So I would say typically homeowner projects go through either that or the RDA process. In some cases, they are required to fill a complete NOI, which is a lot more time-consuming and expensive.
So when you described incremental, is that the same as the cumulative effect?
Yes, I would say it's close anyways, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Good morning. Luanne McCullough, 18 Waterview Lane. My question is, what changes will have occurred on the existing property owners who own the wetlands, or land adjacent to wetlands, and their rights to do what they wish with their own property? How is this going to affect the residents of Kingston who are close to the wetlands throughout the town?
It's, again, my opinion, but my understanding from the way that we've gone about this is that it's not very much. The commission, the reason for the additive language for things like cumulative impacts, the commission is already using those terms in their decisions. What this does, it gives more legal standing to when somebody goes and says, well, I'm going to take that to court and try to overturn your decision if we didn't have something specifically in the bylaw as opposed to the regulations, then we run the risk of losing that argument. So I think for the average homeowner, again, I don't think so. I don't think that this increases, you know, the commission's ability to tell you, no, you can't do anything with your property at all. We already have pretty strong language in the bylaws that allow the commission oversight of things like that. But again, the commission isn't interested in over-regulating, we have enough to do as it is, and people do have their property rights. So we stick pretty closely to what we have for bylaw and regulations whenever we see a filing.
Thank you. I just want to make sure government isn't trying to control a group again.
That's not the idea anyways.
Yes.
Hi, Megan Hickey, 42 Winthrop Street. I also sit on the Conservation Commission, and I also sit on the Open Space Committee. This is a way for our town to better protect the residents and their concerns. It's a way that we have worked through as a board. We've listened to you guys, we've listened to the people that come in front of us with wetlands issues, and this is a way to make it clearer for you guys and for us, a way to protect our wetlands, to protect our resources. We're also adding in a butter notification that is a huge complaint of everybody in this town, that everyone says that they don't know what's going on. By increasing this from 100 to 300 feet, it allows you to know what's going on in your own neighborhood, maybe a street over. This is not an attack on any person, any property owner, anything like that. We are all in town, we're all residents on that board, we're not out-of-towners, we certainly don't have deep pockets, we're not going to make any money off of this, the town's not going to make any money off of this. In the long run, it's just to better secure our natural resources, the aesthetic of our town, our wetlands, our woodlands, and anything adjacent to those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you can make a clarification.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Just for clarification, because I don't know sometimes if I explain things very well, where I talk about increasing the butter notification distance from 100 to 300 feet, that's simply somebody who's filing needs to let you know within, if you live within 300 feet of their property line. When I talk about the additional 100 feet of jurisdiction for cases where more than 10 feet of fill will be removed or added, that's simple jurisdiction, that simply means that you need to file. This does not in any way extend any buffer zones or any performance standards. So I just want that to be clear, that we're talking about more communication so the public can know when a project's going to go in near them, and extended jurisdiction in very, what I expect to be very seldom cases, where more than 10 feet of fill will be added or removed. And again, in those cases, there are no additional performance standards there, it's simply saying that then that project will need review, therefore making sure that that project will follow the guidelines of protecting the wetlands on site.
Bob Koska, 55 South Street, currently a water commissioner. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, because the board has not met and discussed this and voted on it. One of the single most important resources we have in the town of Kingston is our groundwater. All of your water that you get through your faucets comes through groundwater. Wetlands impact groundwater significantly. Should there be pollution in wetlands, it's going to eventually get into the groundwater, and that beautiful water that we have is going to be polluted. Any efforts to try to protect standing water also supports the well water. Any efforts to keep contaminants out of our water system, we will, I will support, and I assume the board will too.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pinella, is that your name?
You got it.
So Brad Randall, 10 Grace Beach Road. Just for clarification, all this does, because I just read it and make sure we're not missing anything, it adds a notification zone 200 feet, makes it 300. So it's just notifying, and then it adds definitions. That's it, right?
I don't want to say that. It's not that simple, because I don't want to misspeak. What we did was we had an existing bylaw, we took the MACC model bylaw, which puts all the chapters in completely different order, and in my opinion, makes it much more understandable and easier to implement and understand. From there, I took the bulk of the language that was in our existing wetlands protection bylaw and moved it into that format, so that we weren't losing any protections, we weren't making any major changes in the protections or the process, simply putting it in a different order so that it was easy to understand and implement. From that point, some of the definitions were minor changes, there were additions of minor language changes, like I stated, things like cumulative impacts, there were a few other small terms here or there. The biggest changes to it were the ones that I spelled out, which were the change in the butter notification distance, the allowance for the commission to take research-based climate and sea level rise predictions into account during permit review, and the extension of jurisdiction by 100 feet in cases where more than 10 feet of fill or excavation is proposed. Those are the only major changes.
Okay, well, thank you. This is very well done, and, you know, it seems like you're someone that really cares. So I thank you for doing this, and, you know, you have to wonder why someone would come up and oppose notification increase for activity near wetlands, and then talk about cranberry bog prevention. No, that is not realistic at all. Nobody is preventing cranberry bogs. This is just to let you know when somebody is messing with your streams and your lakes, so that you can go to meetings and have input.
Thank you.
Buzz Artiano, 11 Clearing Farm Road, I'm also a conservation member for nine years on and off. This was debated, one Z in Buzz, please, not two. This was debated heavily with the board. We did make some minor revisions. I'm a developer, I have been a developer my entire life. I am comfortable with this language. I spent a lot of time researching, and we spent a lot on talking about it as a board. I'm comfortable that this does not impact normal development and/or someone that has an existing house to be able to do what they want. Thank you.
All right, we got one approach maybe? Possibly? Yes.
Jim Franklin, 53 Winthrop Street. I volunteer as Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission and the Chairman of the Open Space Committee. Just to piggyback off what Buzz said, Buzz is a member of the Conservation Commission as well, he's a developer. I am building consultant. I work in construction every single day of my life. I set up projects, I manage projects. I can tell you as somebody who sets up and manages projects, that the integrity of the documents that are put in front of you going into the project equals the integrity of the project coming out of them, the document process, right? Garbage in, garbage out, right? So when we get down to, you know, the brass tacks of what this is doing is, Matt did a really good job at just cleaning up some language and addressing some of the widespread complaints that we've received as a board through the past, whatever, years that I've been on this board. So I think this is an important one to move forward with. It's not an expansion of what we already have, it's just something that cleans it up so that the people who volunteer and put hours and hours of just reviewing these submissions when they come through, many times incomplete, it puts a little bit more forethought into the process going in, so that we can maybe do a better job at enforcing the bylaw that you guys all put in a long time ago, and within the regulations that you were- and put hours and hours of just reviewing these submissions when they come through, many times incomplete, it puts a little bit more forethought into the process going in so that we can maybe do a better job at enforcing the bylaw that you guys all put in a long time ago and within the regulations that were implemented long before any of us got here. So I would ask that you guys support this article.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Moderator, Jim Sewell, fifty-one Indian Pond Road. I'm one of those people that this increase from three hundred feet would affect. I live on Russell Pond, and there's a big project in Sylvia Pond in the conservation area, removal of the dam. And obviously, the five people in our pond were afraid of water levels because Russell Pond flows into Sylvia Pond. And Sylvia Pond's going to be lowered by about forty percent. So I didn't find out about it except through, at that time, the Kingston Reporter. And I had to go to the Conservation Commission, I had to go to the DEP, I had to go to the Army Corps of Engineers, I had to spend two hundred and fifty dollars to file a hearing notice, and then I had to notify all my abutters to let them know that this was happening. And if this was in place, we would have gotten an official notice, and we would have been ahead of the curve. In the end, we lost, okay? We could not get the Conservation Commission to look at our point, nor DEP, nor Army Corps of Engineers. But the point was, at least we had the ability to get in the fight. And I'm in favor of this language. I'm not always in favor of some of the rulings, but I'm definitely in favor of this language for the abutting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Seeing no one else at the microphones, I'm going to move this to a vote. All those in favor of Article thirty-seven say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries minimal opposition. Thirty-eight.
Megan Hickey, Winthrop Street. Move the town vote to amend its town's general bylaws by adding Chapter twenty-six as printed as an attachment to the warrant.
Who's up for the description on this? Come on back.
Again, Matt Pinella, conservation agent. I think Val Masard, town planner, will have something to say to this as well. Again, just a brief background on this. I'd like to come right out and state that this is not something that we put together based on any one property. This is something that since I started here, I've been discussing with Jason Silva, the town's zoning enforcement officer and development coordinator, as well as Val since she started here. And again, similar to the wetlands revisions, this is something that was put together out of, you know, a perceived need based on the existing town regulations and bylaws, as well as extensive public input. Again, we're listening when people say that they want Kingston to stay green, they like the rural character, and all of these different things. So we recognize that there was some sort of a disconnect between all of our permitting processes that does not stop somebody from clear-cutting, bulldozing, you know, on a large-scale area without permits. So we chose to fill that gap because, again, I think the people of Kingston deserve to have fresh air and, you know, good ecology, good drinking water for, you know, the long term. This does not prevent somebody from developing their property. We put a lot of effort between, you know, several town departments and boards in making sure that this does not affect the average homeowner, and it does not make the standard development process more onerous. We had several builders giving input on this bylaw. We have a three-tiered process for, you know, for this essentially, where if you already have a permit from Conservation Planning Board or Zoning, you do not need any additional permitting. If you already have a permit from the Building Department, Board of Health, or another town board other than the three I just described, it would go through an administrative review process, very similar to what I described for our wetlands bylaw. A quick, simple review by town staff. If town staff discovers during the administrative review process that that is something that should not go through administrative review because there are issues there, then it would go through site plan review by the planning board. For other projects on undeveloped land or for larger projects over, I believe, fifteen thousand square feet on developed lands, you would need a special permit from the planning board. So again, this is just a way to make sure that development goes through in a way that's the most beneficial for the town of Kingston, maintaining tree cover, maintaining good ecology. It does not make it so that you can't develop your parcel. It does not make it so that you can't put something in your backyard. It simply adds another check to make sure that the development process goes through in a way that isn't unnecessarily destructive, and we don't end up with lots that are sitting vacant after being essentially razed, and then sitting there waiting for the permitting process.
I have a question, not that I'm for or against this, I'm not voting, but what size parcel of land does this cover?
If I can respond, it's based on the proposed use and also square footage. It's not necessarily related to the size of the parcel.
It's not to a quarter acre? I thought I read somewhere that, so I just want to make sure. Are we talking acres?
Okay, yeah, I'll let Matt.
Yeah, so again, different steps, so it depends. So small projects, which we consider to be greater than fifteen thousand square feet on a developed lot, or projects that are within fifteen feet of a property line or on slopes exceeding twenty-five percent, or projects already being permitted by departments or boards other than planning, zoning, or conservation, would have a simple administrative review by town staff. If staff find problems, they go to site plan review. So essentially, it's set over a certain size. So, you know, if you're a homeowner and you're going to cut an area of forest greater than fifteen thousand square feet, which is roughly, what is that?
A third of an acre?
Quarter to a third of an acre, then you would need that administrative review process. Or if it's within a certain distance, fifteen feet of the property line or a steep slope, because again, your actions in those cases are going to affect your neighbors or whatever's downslope of you. Outside of that, for, you know, unpermitted clearing of undeveloped lots, there's no size requirement on that, and that's a site alteration special permit. But again, that's insinuating that you don't have any permits to do any of that work already. If you did have a building permit, or if you already had a permit for whatever work you're doing there, then that would be site plan review by the planning board, which is, again, a simpler process.
Just to clarify, I'm not trying to sway one way or the other. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew the landmass we were talking about here. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'll just, if I may add to what Matt was pointing out. Administrative review is also appealable to the planning board. So if you're not happy with staff's recommendations on something, you can go see the planning board as a built-in. We are attempting here to manage situations. For example, if somebody's doing extensive filling or changing their landscape of their property where it could affect their neighbor with storm drainage, we're able to look at that and just make sure that we're able to prevent some of the situations that I've seen in other communities where stormwater moves around and becomes a problem between neighbors when it could have been caught during the building permits or those kinds of situations, and addressed during that process rather than becoming a neighbor-to-neighbor problem. So it's something where we're trying to keep this simple, but also build in the knowledge and the ability to work with a builder or developer on coming up with a plan that will address that issue as well.
Oh, go ahead. We're slightly out of schedule.
And just one quick thing I should have mentioned. There are extensive exemptions to this, all listed out in Section Five. You know, including routine maintenance of vegetation, you know, construction and maintenance of public and private streets and utilities, work conducted in accordance with a valid earth removal permit issued by the town of Kingston, use, maintenance, or improvement of agricultural activities in existence at the time this bylaw is adopted, work conducted in accordance with an approved NRCS agricultural plan, and they go on from there. So this isn't something that I expect to be, you know, something that will become problematic for residents of Kingston. This is something that will help, again, you know, maintain forest cover, maintain clean water through reduction of stormwater flow off of sites, things like that.
Seeing no one at the microphones, I can, let's move this to a vote. All those in favor of, I'm sorry.
Dana Dupree, eight Aaron Path. Move to the town to vote to amend town's general bylaws by adding Chapter twenty-six. What does Chapter twenty-six state?
It's a brand-new bylaw. So what we're proposing, which is at the end of the warrant handout, page seventy-three, would be the new Chapter twenty-six.
Thank you.
Yes.
Jim Franklin, fifty-three Winthrop Street. Again, speaking for myself, the intent of this bylaw was basically to respond to some situations that had come up where previous people in town or developers that just basically came in and started clear-cutting parcels that were under development, with the understanding that it's easy to just go into something and say that you didn't know how to do something, right? There was nothing to keep them in line with what the regulations were. There was no preapproval step to go into a wetland resource area and just start, you know, cutting trees that you wanted to clear for a vista, right? So from that perspective, there's been these things that people in the town have been fighting against for a very long time. The intent of this, I think, was to achieve some type of process that should be complete, that doesn't add regulation to any of the processes unless there's already an existing regulation that needs to be reviewed, right? So if you have a parcel and you say you decide you want to put fruit trees up, you want to clear some trees for that, if you're underneath fifteen thousand square feet, which is probably twice the size of this room, then you would have to go down and get an administrative review, right? If you're outside of jurisdiction areas, there's no extra steps beyond that except, all right, is there slope issues where you're going to be, you know, just destroying all the soil stabilization? And is this going to create a problem? And if it is, then we should talk about it, make sure the proper safeguards are in place. So this isn't, you know, a real huge expansion on anything. It's a tool that the building commissioner can use just to prevent clear-cutting, just things that haven't been permitted, right? We want everything to go through the permit. You know, I think the town boards are very good at, you know, bringing projects through, and, you know, certainly, I can say our board is typically.
Thirty seconds.
Majority, we're on the unanimous decision side when we permit a project because we spend the time that we need to do. So this just gives one more tool just to make sure that we're, everybody's going through the process. So I would vote in favor of this.
I'll now take a vote. All those, hold on, hold on, hold on. All those in, clap by voting. All those in favor of Article thirty-eight say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thirty-eight passes with minimal opposition. On to thirty-nine.
Okay, Article thirty-nine. We're getting there. Amend to general bylaws, Chapter twenty-seven, naming of town property by law. Motion, move the town vote to amend its general bylaws by adding Chapter twenty-seven, naming of town property as printed in the warrant. I can do the description. The purpose of this article is to establish a bylaw for the naming of town-owned buildings.
Would anyone like to be heard on this? Then?
I don't really want to, but I don't have to.
Take a vote. Article thirty-nine, the majority vote, favorable by the board of selectmen, five to zero. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, no opposition.
Thank you.
Forty. Megan, we're going to bring you a chair down here next year.
Do you like to read in public? Because I don't. Megan Hickey, Winthrop Street. Move the town vote to transfer the town-owned property identified in the warrant to the care and custody of the Conservation Commission for conservation purposes and further to remove the following language from the 2014 town meeting vote referencing parcels zero-nine-five-zero-zero-two-zero-zero, zero-nine-five-zero-zero-three-zero-zero, and zero-nine-five-zero-zero-four-zero-zero-zero. Quote, "Not to include portions of the prior three lots south of Monks Hill Road," unquote. "And the following language from the 2014 meeting vote referencing parcels zero-nine-four-zero-zero-three-zero-zero-zero, and zero-nine-four-zero-zero-five-zero-zero." Nope, I just read that twice. I apologize. Okay. "Not to include any portions of a parking area, Smelt Pond Beach, or Scout Camp, and to include any portion of the developed area around the old Scout Camp building off Monks Hill Road." As written in the warrant.
Anyone like to be heard on this? This requires a two-thirds vote. Yes.
I don't know if this is for Megan or for the assessors. Matt, I guess I'm trying to follow with the intent of this article, but we have nineteen parcels listed here, tax title parcels and some non-tax title. Have we confirmed that the town is in fact the owner of all of these parcels? Because out of the parcel list, there was six of them that I looked up that did not list the town of Kingston as the current owner.
To clarify, you're talking about the tax title?
Yeah.
Parcels? I can't answer that. I would say that if that is the case and those parcels are not actually in tax title, then I would ask council that, I would imagine those ones just don't go through.
Even if they're in tax title, it doesn't mean that the town of Kingston owns them. And so have we received a judgment on? Sorry. Sorry. All right, the parcels that I had identified is thirty-two, six, thirty-four, eighty-eight, thirty-four, eighty-nine, thirty-four, ninety. All the thirty-fours over on Clifton, thirty-eight, seventy-three, and forty-two, three. And so when I look in the assessor's online database, they did not show as the town of Kingston being the owner. So they could be in tax title, but if we haven't received a judgment and foreclosed on them and we don't have current ownership, how can we be transferring or taking any action? So that's just my question.
Carl? But then we'll defer to council.
Carl Pike, Shore Drive. When I was the treasurer last year, I attempted to do an auction of these types of town-owned properties. And we, in fact, did validate that every one of these items were our own by the town. Some going back even before our current system was in accounting and assessing was put together. So that I am ninety-nine point nine percent sure that all of these articles are in fact owned by the town. In fact, when I first saw this article, I went back to our potential auction records and verified that, yes, every one of them was in there.
Council?
No, it's not there. Oh. So I will say that oftentimes, the updating of the computer system is a little bit delayed. So if you were to sell your house today and record the deed the very next day, it doesn't get recorded on the website, so that could be part of the problem. I'm not your tax title lawyer, so I didn't undertake any of these transactions. But for a tax title, Mary's one hundred percent right. You need to wait for a final judgment. I presume that Carl's representation is accurate, but I can't verify it one way or the other. But it could simply be a delay in that recording, coming back to the town, and being inputted into the system.
I guess the question is, if there isn't a judgment and we pass this now, what happens?
It wouldn't be valid. For those parcels, for those parcels.
Just the parcels we don't have a judgment on, correct?
Right, exactly right. So you have to have title to property in order to convey it. So to the extent that that portion... So to the extent that that portion was not validly held by the town, it would be ineffective.
Yes?
Mark Guiterboni, fifteen Old Orchard Lane. My question on the, these properties, I was on the Open Space Committee four years. We spent a lot of time working on separating municipal possibles from conservation and the recreational area that was designated around the Smelt Pond area for possible uses of boating and sailing. The article, once we put these properties in conservation, I'd like council to address the requirement under chapter ninety-seven, I believe, where we require state legislature to remove them from our conservation jurisdiction. And if, if she could answer that question, I'm concerned that by placing all these parcels in conservation, we then restrict them and if the town needs to put a water tank someplace or move forward with other plans for municipal use, they would be locked up.
So that's true. So once it becomes conservation property, it's protected by article ninety-seven, which is a constitutional provision, and essentially the process to remove and use those parcels for development, non-conservation uses, you would come to town meeting, file special legislation. That special legislation gets submitted to the legislature for approval, but prior to that, it gets submitted to the E O E A, which is a division of the state. And what they tend to require is equal acreage coming out with a donation back into. So if you're taking one acre out of conservation, you have to find another parcel of equal size and replace that conservation land because this protection is meant to protect air, water, open space, all of those uses which the government decided was an important resource that they didn't want undermined.
Do you have a follow-up question, sir?
I would like to, to recommend that we, this isn't really a well-vetted decision. I think we should have a public hearing and discuss whether we, as a town, need to actually use these parcels for other uses. I think we have a lot of land in Kingston that is off the tax rolls that we've got dedicated. I think that's important for the character of Kingston, but on the other hand-
This is the public hearing.
We need these for municipal use, we're going to be asked to come back here and buy more land for municipal use because we don't have access to these properties. Thank you.
Respond?
I'd like to thank Mr. Guiterboni and anybody else who was on the Open Space Committee that dealt with all these parcels in the past. I'll start by saying that in those particular cases that, that he's speaking of, they're only portions of parcels, the rest of the parcels were already put into conservation. And to my knowledge, they were done, that was done for several reasons, one of which the area in question was called poor habitat, poor quality habitat, which is, since I've been here, I've determined to be a hundred percent untrue. That area is incredibly important, habitat being the northern terminus of the Atlantic Coastal Pine Barrens. A lot of, a lot of rare species, it's, it's really, really important quality habitat. In addition to that, that's the part of town primarily that's, you know, really doing a great job filtering groundwater. All of the sand deposits that are underneath the natural soils and the natural forests there do a great job of getting stormwater back into the ground filtered, ready for drinking water again. As far as the recreation side of it, there was an area there that was left for the purposes that Mr. Guiterboni mentioned. That was almost ten years ago, nothing has happened in that area. I have checked with the rec commission, the rec commission and the rec department determined that they were not likely to do any of those types of activities there, and more so that a lot of the activities they would want to do there would fall right in line with conservation use. Any passive recreation is allowable on conservation land, so if they want to do kayaking tours or classes or hikes, things like that, a lot of those things can be done anyways with no approval from the Conservation Commission. The only area that we took, that we left outside of conservation control is the area around the old Boy Scout Camp where there is still a building there that the scouts like to use from time to time for the purpose that if that ever needed to be rebuilt, they didn't have to come before conservation for that. I had one thought and I just lost it.
You'll have another chance.
Happens.
I'll take a question while you think of that.
Sure.
Pine Dubois, ninety-three Elm Street. Used to be on the Conservation Commission for ten years in the Open Space Committee formation as well as the Land Stewardship Committee. And as I recall, we had recommended all those parcels in Camp Necon to be part of conservation, and it was, they were later stripped for the purpose of trying to do this heavy recreational project. So I, I'm completely in support of this, and I also did go through every one of those parcels last night on the G I S, and it all said Town of Kingston. So I don't know, you know, Mary, whether, you know, my computer's different than yours, but I, I don't think that's a reason to kick them off. And I, and I would very much support the work that is being done here because, as was said previously, it does support your groundwater, it does support everything that's important to you in this town, and there's no reason to, we've talked about it for decades and that it should be protected to the degree that we possibly can, and this is a great opportunity to do so.
Thank you.
And I know that the town, department heads have talked about it a lot, so if he's got it on the agenda, it's good to go.
And I just want to be super clear so you understand what I said. I, I agree a hundred percent with Matt that passive recreation would not require any sort of legislation, that would be permitted in a conservation area. I don't want anyone to misconstrue what I said.
Board?
Hi, Sheila Vaughn, Seven Frank Street. I just want to, also, I don't think we're getting so much new information, but I would like to say that I, on my, on my pastime, listened to the Conservation Commission meetings, and so they do a very good job of vetting these. And to say that we need more information, and I believe that if you wanted to listen to this, you would go to the Conservation Meetings, they're online, they are recorded. I have listened to this and I, I have made my informed decision. I know sometimes it's hard to do that, but this is why we have these commissions, and this is why we have these people that are, are understanding of what we do. And I think it's important that this is a five-zero vote from the Conservation Commission. And I think it's very important to go to their meetings and listen to their meetings, they are recorded, you can go online afterwards, but I listened to their meetings and I, I really feel like they've done a very good job of vetting this and understanding this. So I'm in favor of this, to let this go through.
Thank you. Yes?
Jim Sewell, fifty-one Indian Pond. Thanks, Sheila. Just a question, Matt, is any of the parcels going to have a financial impact in order to get them into, say, Conservation Commission for the town? In other words, will you have to spend any money in the town to get these to be put into the usage you're describing?
I was just about to come out here and say something about no cost to the town, but I should defer to Carol or Carl, because I've never done the tax title process before. So I know there are steps that we have to take, I don't know if there's going to be a large cost to that. Can anybody more qualified speak to that?
Well, it's not, Matt, it sounds like it'll be minimal, if anything, I mean-
That's my expectation, but I'll defer.
Yeah. About how much land is it, roughly?
I should have had that prepared here today. I, I wrote down that it was roughly fifty acres of Pine Barrens protections, but that's focused primarily on the area around Camp Necon. The rest of the parcels, I want to say are mostly smaller in size. So I don't have, I don't have an exact number for you on that, I apologize.
Yes?
Go ahead, Carol.
Carol McCoy, Finance Director. No, there is no cost, there's no recording at the registry of deeds as far as I'm aware.
You might have to record a conservation restriction, but that's like, I don't know, thirty bucks or something. Oh, seventy-seven.
Hello? That would be the only cost, is something recorded at the registry of deeds.
Okay. Matt, how about, I see your budget only going up about five point five percent, adding an additional fifty acres, how about maintenance? You know, I know, I was a past member of the Finance Committee and I remember some of those budgets and how little money is there, but I'm just curious, with adding all this land to the whole process, are we prepared to take care of it?
Short answer is yes, we're prepared, and there should not be an increase in cost based on what we're taking in here. Our budget for land management is very, very small, and I do have plans on increasing that slightly over time to make sure that we can keep up with the expectations of the people in Kingston for how their properties look. But I'll say that my standpoint on that is that these are conservation properties, they're there for passive use, they're there for ecology, they're there for air to breathe and water to drink, all of those reasons. So in my opinion, they don't need a lot of maintenance, they don't need to look like parks, they don't need to be perfect. We do have a CPC article from last year that we're working on to update the signage, a little bit of fencing, make the properties more inviting, make sure people know about them and use them. So I, again, I don't expect that this is going to increase our budget in a meaningful way, we already manage a lot of land for a little bit of money, and we rely pretty heavily on volunteers to do that, so.
Thank you.
Can I just quickly speak to my lost thought from before?
Find your thought, let us have it.
Focusing for a second just on the Camp Necon area, when I started here two years ago, it was in really poor condition. It had been owned by the town for nearly fifty years under general municipal. The portions that were transferred to conservation were transferred in 2014, but there was still not gated, no signage, very few people using it for passive recreation, a lot of people using it with trucks, jeeps, ATVs, dirt bikes, bonfires, partying, contractors dumping things in the woods. In the past two years, the Conservation Commission and volunteers has worked tirelessly to reverse those trends to the end that now, and we continue to improve, but at this point now, we have a lot of people out there walking dogs, walking with their kids, we have a lot of hunters there in the fall, we have people there on their bicycles, like, this area is turning into what I envisioned it as, which is the gem of Kingston. This is Pine Barrens habitat, this is vernal pools, coastal plain ponds, just a great place to get out in Kingston and forget all about the developed world and enjoy nature. And we're, we're moving forward, and that's the idea behind that portion of this article, is just to increase the protection of that area for the purpose of the habitat, for the purpose of ensuring that that area, as it gets added use, we did just get several hundred new apartment units in the parking lot of the mall that are now filling up, and that is walking distance to our trails in there. So we know we're going to get a lot more usage in there over time, and this is one way to just make sure the whole area is protected and is able to take that added capacity of trail use. Overall, this article I envisioned as low-hanging fruit. This is a way for no cost to get these parcels that we all vetted, being myself and the Conservation Commission, as being high-impact parcels that are in the tax title program, and they're considered high-impact because they either butt our existing conservation or open-space properties, or they butt important resources like the Jones River and its tributaries. So all of these are just an easy way to get these things transferred over, there's very little financial liability to the town, and I always like to throw the little plug in about-
Thirty seconds.
The long-time tax liability for conservation properties is about the best bet for the town. When you have development, you have the increase in services provided, particularly with schools, you're at a negative. When you have conservation land, long-term, you're in the positive and you have a better place to live.
Yes?
Philip Wainwright, eighteen Tickenbrook Street. I was wondering if changing all this land and conservation is going to limit hunting in those areas? Any way, shape, or form?
Short answer, no. There are certain, if you go onto our webs, on the Conservation website, you see the conservation land rules and regulations, it lists off which conservation properties are closed to hunting. Oftentimes when that happens, it's because there was a conservation restriction with a third-party organization that doesn't allow hunting, or it was perceived that there's no legal way to hunt in there with the setbacks from houses and things like that. So there's, myself personally, and I think most of the commission, are supporters of responsible hunting, and like I said, Camp Necon, we've seen an increase in hunting there in my opinion over the last couple of years from the general cleanup of the site and last disturbance.
That's all, thank you very much. Seeing no one else, we'll move this to a vote, this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, minimal opposition. Forty-one. So article forty-one is a petition for street acceptance. Is anyone here to move that? To, to move it?
Good morning, everybody. Amanda Sullivan, Delano Ave, twenty-two Delano Ave. I'm sorry, I'm ignorant on the process, do I read this and then say I want to move it?
So my understanding is, and I'm going to defer to council, is that whoever petitioned this didn't follow the proper procedure to bring this before a town meeting. It requires a layout hearing before the Board of Selectmen, so it's, actually, it's out of order, and I will give you the reason why, well, town council will tell you why.
Yeah, so pursuant to law, you have to have that layout hearing, and prior to the layout hearing, there are notice requirements, posting requirements, et cetera, and that hasn't happened, so it's not proper. The town meeting doesn't have jurisdiction at this point to decide whether or not to make it a public way. At the Board of Selectmen meeting, I want to say three weeks ago or something like that, the petitioner did appear before the board, this explanation was given to the petitioner, the couple-
Yes, the petitioner was my son and his wife.
Oh, yes.
And I do, I believe it was miscommunication between the town and what was required to the petitioner, so.
Exactly. So they're going to work together to see if there could be a solution that's workable even if it doesn't yield dedication in the end, or if they still want to pursue dedication, have a layout hearing and bring it back again to the body.
Correct. Okay. So.
So even if you moved it, Sean will rule you out of order.
That's what we were told, that it wasn't going to be-
It was going to be no vote today, so.
That's what-
He was, my son and his family were here, but then they, they had to, they had to go, but that was their understanding, that there would be no vote today.
Yeah. The tricky thing is, once it's on the warrant, it's on the warrant, we can't pull it off, so, yep.
Okay, great. Is that it?
That's it.
All right, great, thanks.
Article forty-two.
Pine Dubois, ninety-three Elm Street, Kingston, also president of Jones River Landing in Kingston and executive director of the Jones River Watershed Association. And I move that the select board make the intersection of Landing Road and Maple Street a three-way, that is an all-way, intersection in the interest of improved public safety as a speed-reducing measure or to take any other action relative thereto. Thank you. So as I said, we're at, at Jones River Landing. Those of you that know it, know Landing Road runs between Main Street and the town of Duxbury at Bay Farm. It is a scenic road in town. We're at the Curve, the oldest continuously operated boatyard in the country, and every day we have trucks backing up because they missed the reading of the sign low bridge ahead and the railroad bridge. And those that don't put on their little thing and their backup, hit the bridge and call out the fire department and the police department and the record department and all those kind of guys, and there's a lot of cleanup, and I would say that happens six or seven times a year, every year. We've had people crash into the sewer department, actually rolling over the car, we've had people coming out of Maple Street and running into school buses, we've had people die on the road. It's kind of like the Daytona five-hundred, if you will. You know, they're coming out of Main Street because there's log jam on the road, and they're trying to get somewhere in a hurry, and they don't really think that there's a blind curve or people trying to get out of the boatyard or crossing the walk or pushing their children in a, in a, in a, in a wheel carriage or somebody riding a bike. A scenic road, this is part of the Bay Circuit Trail. For those that don't know, the Bay Circuit Trail extends from the north shore and runs two hundred miles and anchors at Bay Farm. It's important. It's also very- It's also very narrow, very skinny, the bridge is very low, and we need to do a lot more. We were thinking that the twenty-five mile-an-hour speed limit in thickly settled areas would solve a problem. It hasn't had a dent, not a dent, except when I'm on the road, of course, and I drive twenty-five miles an hour, and get everybody really upset with me because everybody's in a hurry because we've got something else on our minds. I get that. So, we need tools to slow things down. Putting a stop sign coming from Main Street to Duxbury, right there before you hit Maple Street, and from Duxbury to Maple Street, right there, so you can read the signs and decide which way you're going first, will have all the difference in the world, and it will, won't cost anything. So, we're asking the Board of Selectmen as road commissioners to just put up those two signs, and if it really comes down to it, I will donate them to you, just so you do it, because I think it will help us a great deal. Scenic Road, I think we should do a lot of improvements, I think we should do, you know, crosswalks and all that kind of stuff, but this is a first step, and really, there's an awful lot of people that try to walk that road. They're trying to go to Bay Farm, they're trying to walk Down River Street to go to Idina, you know, it's a great part of town, so please support us for a little bit of safety.
So, just to be clear, this is just advisory?
Correct.
Meaning, ultimately, you could go to the Board of Selectmen and say, hey, town meeting said, give me a sign. They still make the ultimate decision here, so it's just an advisory opinion, it's not gonna, if you vote yes or you vote no, you're not getting a sign, it's just, say, town meeting said, give us a sign, or we don't want a sign, so I don't know if that limits some of the questions, but.
I'm just asking for a little bit more support than just us walking into the Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Yes.
Jean Landis, nominee eighty-four Wolf Pond Road. I currently serve as vice president of the Jones River Village Historic Society, and you know that our property is right there at that intersection. The only entrance to that intersection is nearly a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree turn onto a town road to access our property. It's very dicey, getting in and out of that property, if you're coming from the south, if you're coming from the north, it's not a big deal, 'cause it's almost parallel to the main road. I am very much in favor, our board has not voted on this article, but as a, as a member of that board and as a member of the community, I am very much in favor of this proposal and hope that the Board of Selectmen will take this seriously as a safety issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll get you.
Mark Rodevoni, fifteen Old Orchard Lane. I'm a member of the Jones River Village Historical Board Member, as well as the Jones River Landing and the Kingston Yacht Club. These three historic groups use this intersection frequently, and I'd like to ask for your support in moving this forward for the sake of safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Select board.
So, Sheila Vaughn, seven Frank Street, Kingston, Mass. I wanna say that on April eleventh, we did have this come forward to us, and we, although we took a negative vote, it was because there is a study right now that is, we abstained because we were waiting for the study to come through, which, this could go on the fall town election if it needed to be, if people wanted that, but we are waiting for the study to come through, so we did abstain because we, we are looking at what Old Colony is stating about the needs of a stop sign. I'm not saying there isn't a need for the stop sign, we abstained because we're trying to get more data on this. So, I just wanted to let you know that it is not that we don't want it, it is the fact that we abstained because there is a study for this in process, and so, a little bit caught before the horse for, for, for me, so I, so we abstained. So, we're just gonna wait for the study results, and if it comes up again, we'll see what that states, and then there is also a fall town election, hopefully, a fall town meeting that this could come up on, but I, we're just waiting for those study results.
Thank, thank you. Yes?
Yep.
I'm Sarah Alter.
Waiting, I'm just standing, like, waiting for the study result.
I thought you were done. Are you, do you need more time? I, there was a pause, I thought you were, okay, yes.
I'm Sarah Alter, I live at forty-one Landing Road, which is the house, if you're going toward Duxbury from three A, is right next to the railroad. I have witnessed this tremendous speed and tremendous difficulties because people drive too fast for some thirty-five years. Well, I've been here forty years, but I got really involved about thirty-five years ago, so you've seen me before at town meeting, trying to do something about this problem. I, I see people walking, there are people walking their dogs, there are people running at all hours of the day, some at night, there are people going to the Bradford House, there are people going to Jones River Landing on foot, there are tons of people on bicycles, and I just, I'm, I'm tired of talking about it. I've seen all these studies that Old Colony Planning Council has done for years, and they, they haven't gone anywhere. Main thing, they, they are looking at this, the flow of traffic, they're not really looking at the use of citizens by walking down the road. There aren't, there are sidewalks a little bit of the way.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, anyway, thank you for listening.
Susan Sherman, two-fifteen Main Street.
Ms. Sherman, this is gonna be something new, we, we know it's not safe, new information, please.
Excuse me?
Just new information.
I guess it is new, because I'd like to know why, I totally support this, but I'd like to know why we continue to do these studies, which is, which, what Sarah said, but the problem is, why are you not listening to the people that are telling you what's going on, because they live there, and this is directed right to the selectmen? Thank you.
My name's Sheila.
I think we're ready for a vote here. So, the, again, this is advisory, this is just telling the Board of Selectmen that town meeting voted one way or the other, it's ultimately up to them. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes with minimal support. Town meeting wants a sign. Article forty-three. Veterans Memorial.
Bob Ketter, seventeen Pembroke Street, Kingston. I move that we accept the motion as written.
Can you just read the description for ourselves, what you plan on? Yeah, I'll, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty to fund the construction and related costs of a veterans memorial on the front lawn of the Kingston townhouse, and to take any other action relative thereto. Would you like to tell them what you propose, sir?
Yes, I would. Good afternoon, I guess. The Kingston Veterans Memorial is planned to be located on the front lawn of the townhouse. As you, if you had an opportunity to receive a flyer that was given out to some of the people that came in here earlier, it'd be a beautiful enhancement to the front lawn of the townhouse. This site has been chosen after numerous sites were evaluated. It is the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen and the town administration that the front lawn of the townhouse is the appropriate location. The purpose of this memorial is to honor and recognize the contributions to our freedoms secured by those who have served their country in its time of need. The Veterans Memorial site purposes are to honor all service veterans, those living and working among us, those who have died in service to our country, and those who have returned to hardship and difficult circumstances. It will be available for use by residents, schools, community groups, for gatherings and events of various types. Site features is a large patio area, seating, pathways, gardens, landscaping, flags, signage, and the symbols of eight branches of the military. It will serve as a day-to-day reminder of the freedoms we enjoy, thanks to the service of veterans. The planning for this memorial began on Veterans Day in nineteen, or nineteen, twenty-twenty-one, at the Veterans Luncheon, and the intent is to honor the veterans from the Air Force, the Army, Coast Guard, Marine Corps, Merchant Marine, Massachusetts National Guard, Navy, and the Space Force. This space will serve as a place for people to reflect upon the freedoms we have as citizens that have secured their service, that has been secured by their service to our country. By being on the front lawn of the memorial will be a focal point for the community, to be used for recreation, reflection, ceremonies, weddings, commissioning ceremonies, retirements, to name a few. Other towns have found more uses for the space than they ever envisioned when they started dedicating their memorial. We are certain our memorial will serve the same thing. By voting to approve our funding request today, we'll be able to complete construction of this and dedicate it on Veterans Day, I mean, excuse me, on Memorial Day in twenty-twenty-four. We have exhausted all opportunities to raise funds through different commissions, we have been turned down, not because the project wasn't suitable, but because funding was unavailable. We recently have learned that the possibility, and I say possibility, of getting a hundred-thousand-dollar grant through State Representative Kathy Lanatra is there, but it still has several more approval aspects to it that need to be taken place. But, bear in mind that if the project goes forward, any money that we receive from the state will be offset in the overall project, and the money will be returned to the community as such.
Well done. Yes.
Hi, Jean Landis, excuse me, Jean Landis, nominee eighty-four Wolf Pond Road. First, let me state I am in favor of this project. However, I am concerned with the wording of the article, because nowhere does it say that if there's additional funding received, this amount will, the equal amount will be returned to free cash. I also understand there's been some fundraising done by the committee, which I certainly applaud. So, what exactly is the total cost, what has been raised, and what would be the residual, should the hundred thousand dollars be approved at the state level?
We have gone forward with raising close to thirty-five thousand dollars to this point. Money has been expended for the study of the project itself, for the architectural layout, and all the things associated with getting us to the point we are at this time. However, the, any money that's expended, we feel that the hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars, or, excuse me, hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars will be able to complete the project. So, what we are looking for, if the state comes through with their money, that the unexpended money will come back to the town.
You're saying that I don't see that anywhere in this motion, and I do believe that needs to be included.
I disagree with you from the standpoint that there, this money came from other projects within the community that were funded to the full amount of theirs, and they did not consume all the funds that were involved there, and that's where it came back to the community. This money had been committed, I believe, in twenty-twenty-one for projects then.
I slightly disagree with you. I served as chairman of the Finance Committee. Free cash is normally excess revenue brought into the town, not just remaining money from previous articles.
Thank you, Keith Ickey, town administrator. I think you're both somewhat right, we put, start that, so. This is, this is very similar, I guess, in, 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 in the, similar to the article that was approved last year for conservation, we, we approved funding, a portion of that coming from free cash, and if, if there was a state grant that was awarded, that money would go back to the CPC funds. That, in fact, happened. The hundred thou, I'm sorry, the hundred thousand dollars you voted to return to free cash today is very similar to what you'll be doing probably next year. We didn't include any, any additional language in the article, because we didn't find out until earlier this week that the legis, included in the legislative, legislative-approved budget was a hundred thousand dollar earmark for the Veterans Memorial. So, the intent is, is very simply to, any amount that, if the hundred thousand dollars gets funded through the state budget, and we won't know that until sometime probably late in June, we'll be back here if it's a fall town meeting in the fall, or next spring, just like we did with the conservation funds, asking for the voters to resend the hundred thousand dollars from their appropriation and return it back to free cash.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard? Okay. We'll move for a vote here. All those in favor of Article forty-three, say aye, thank you. All those opposed? Article passes with minimal opposition. Article forty-four. Forty-four? Forty-four is not being moved? Therefore, we can move on. Article forty-five. For Article forty-five?
Can't believe we're getting it done this afternoon.
Floor is yours.
Doug Dondaro, fourteen Copper Beach Drive, support for Article forty-five is the taking, not taking.
You just gotta make the motion, just read it.
Should I have?
Sorry.
I could use your glasses, but if I could say as written, as, thank you, Buzz, with one Z.
Article?
I move Article forty-five as written.
There you go.
Thank you.
What would you like to say?
I would like to say, Article forty-five is taking town-owned property that's been landlocked for many, many years, and putting it into conservation. The reason for this is Copper Beach Drive, which is the canary in the coal mine to this school, the athletic fields, and the other school, is right over yonder. You've got a barrier, a white pine forest, we've had since the MBTA put in the train station, that has protected a neighborhood, has protected the school, has protected everything that's going on over at the industrial parks, the wastewater treatment plant, the turbines, now we have a solar farm and a train, and it has protected that neighborhood. There's been no need for this because it's been landlocked. The property is zoned industrial-commercial, and right now, there is a forty-B that's moving at a rapid pace, and it's going to destroy the integrity of a neighborhood, and eventually it'll destroy the integrity in the community who we feel we have of this school. The hundred-and-fifty apartment building that is planned, it's moving at a rapid pace. Like I said, the town already owns the parcel, so it's costing us, I guess, seventy-seven dollars to put it into conservation. It may not stop the forty-B, but it's definitely not gonna make the forty-B as large as it needs to be, to be profitable. I won't take any more of your time, but I ask you for your support to put these parcels into conservation.
Question?
Yes. Jean Landis, nominee eighty-four Wolf Pond Road. I serve as the chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust. These are abillable lots that could easily be used for affordable housing. There's no reason why they couldn't be. We have a dearth of property that's town-owned that can be used for affordable housing. And what is affordable housing? That's for housing for individuals who have income less than eighty percent of metropolitan area. It also requires that they qualify for mortgages, and that they have sufficient income to pay for their house and all of their services. We're in a situation where we have less than five percent of our housing that is currently affordable. That means the type of people who work in minimum-wage jobs, or slightly above that, have no way of finding housing here in the town, because last year, the average home sold for six-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. You have to have a significant income in order to afford a home here in Kingston. I urge the body to please not place this property in conservation I urge the body to please not place this property in conservation because it is buildable and we should be reserving town property that can be used to improve the situation with our affordable housing. Thank you.
If I may?
Hold on, I'm gonna give you a response. This gentleman?
Buzz Artiello, eleven Clearing Farm Road. Again, conservation, remember Conservation Commission. These three parcels were on our original list that Matt identified to be taken as conservation land that we moved earlier. I was not in favor of placing these three parcels in because they are three separate parcels. They don't connect to anything that we already own. And I felt like that they were going to become orphaned parcels that would not be maintained. I understand your point, and I respect it. And I don't, other than that, I don't have a strong feeling one way or another. If you'd like to put it in conservation, we're happy to take it.
Thank you.
I think?
Hey, Mark Guittaboni, fifteen Old Orchard Lane. Owner of sixteen Copper Beach Drive. The developer that's working on that forty-B has a proposal in front of your Board of Selectmen to exchange land, which would allow for a three-times-a-size green buffer behind the Copper Beach Drive subdivision. I think that situation should be investigated before moving forward. Same reason I spoke to about the land being conservation. Once restricted, it would be unavailable for the exchange through the permitting process that the developer's going through right now. I appreciate Mr. Dondaro's initiative, but the better solution involves the green space a hundred feet behind Mr. Dondaro and sixteen Copper Beach, which I currently own. And I, I believe you should vote no on this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Select Board?
I was one of the votes that voted against it, and I explained to Mr. Dondaro, the petitioner, some of the reasons, and I'd like to share those quickly. Once again, I do not like the forty-B, but that's just my own personal opinion. What, my concern here with putting this in conservation is we might get to an inevitable, an inevitable spot where the forty-B is approved regardless of that land. If that's the case, and it's, and it's in conservation, because we already, the town already owns the land. But if it's in conservation, we, there's a chance that it might be in the best interest of the neighborhood in order to take that land and swap for a buffer. Now, I'm not saying that that's what we, you know, that, that, that will help the forty-B or anything like that. What I'm saying is if we're left with the inevitable situation that the forty-B is happening, there's a possibility that a land swap might actually be in the best interest of the neighborhood, the abiding neighborhood, and the surrounding areas for some type of a land swap to basically make a barrier between that position. And so although I want it to be in conservation, and I want it to be town-owned, I also don't want to tie our hands into a situation that could potentially leave us with no other options but to have a disjointed situation that maybe could be made better. Now, it's, the town still owns it, so we still have the ability to, we're not, we're not giving it to anybody. But it, it, it takes us away from the ability to make any kind of deal that might actually benefit the neighborhood if we are in fact made to do the forty-B.
Paul?
Go right ahead.
Paul Gallagher, eight Longview Drive. It's, it's so difficult to get up and have to address this again. I've spoke to this at least three times. It's been discussed as being property that we should sell, and each time, town meeting has turned it down. The reason we don't sell it is because when the MBTA came in, that neighborhood was promised that we would continuously have a buffer for the community so that they didn't have to deal with all that stuff that was built behind it. And it was a protection. So if these people don't need this property to build, why are we, why are we giving it up? So basically, what it comes down to is that these, these parcels protect that neighborhood, your neighbors. If you had, if you will live in there, you would want the same thing. This protects the, the neighborhood so that they can't keep coming closer and closer and tearing down the entire buffer, which is what will end up happening if we, if we allow this, if we don't, if we turn this article down. They'll just come closer and closer after we had promised years ago that we would maintain a buffer. So please, I, I say vote in favor of putting these into conservation. It's not going to hurt us, it's not going to, it's not going to cost us any money, but it's going to protect your neighbors. So please, vote in favor of this article.
Thank you, Paul, but also, it's bigger than one neighborhood. Pine, it's going to affect the traffic in front of your location. We know on a regular morning, the traffic backs up all the way up to Evergreen Street. The growth will be unbelievable, and the traffic will be out of control if that forty-B continues. Thank you for listening.
Hold on, we got a couple more. Yes, sir.
Brad Randall, ten Grace Beach Road. So I remember when that development first went in, before there was block and, you know, people used to fly down there on the shortcut to the mall, that development has been high-impact. And, you know, these are the people that already live in our town. We should be committed to protecting them. When we talk about fortyBs, I, I respect the work of the Affordable Housing Trust, I really do, and it's important work. But there's little that we can do to stop affordable housing. The idea that we need to not conserve land so that some, some, sometime in the future, we may need to develop it into affordable housing, the land is not developed right now. There's enough land in Kingston that is underutilized that is developed. So if we don't like the zoning, we need to have a discussion about the zoning that we have in this town. But when it comes to protecting the neighborhood, it should be a no-brainer. That, and that, that's, that's, that's the viewpoint of this town. Maybe not this room, we'll see.
Mary?
Thank you, Mr. Randall. So we, we talk a lot about this percentage of affordable housing and how Kingston has a very low percentage of affordable housing. I, I don't even know if we're at five percent, probably below it. But you have to get above ten percent in order to reach safe harbor and have the protections that you need in order to fend off these forty-B developments. I'll be quite frank, I've been coming to town meeting here for well over fifteen years. We are never going to get over ten percent. We will never, ever reach the safe harbor in this community. People are fighting developments, and every time you fight a development, you fight the ability to increase the affordable housing component of our housing stock. So the fact is that when we hear, when I hear arguments about using a buildable lot for affordable housing as if it's going to make a difference, it's just not true. And, and to use these, we've had an Affordable Housing Trust since, I believe, two thousand and seven at this point. They have over, probably seven hundred thousand dollars in the trust fund that the town meeting has appropriated, and we haven't done anything with it. So if this, if these, these parcels are protecting a neighborhood, our neighbors, but more importantly, the school and the buffer for our children who are using our school fields, then I think it's important to support this article. I ha, I do have a question, either for the Board of Selectmen or for the petitioner. Who is the developer of the forty-B project that's being proposed? Mr. Guittaboni? Okay, thank you.
Mark Guittaboni, fifteen Old Orchard Lane. For the record, I am not the developer. I, I did sell some land to the developer going forward.
Beneficiary?
However, I would like to address that if, by voting for this article, you are actually hurting the neighborhood because the developer's proposal of putting a hundred-foot of green space between the neighborhood and the one-hundred-and-sixty-two proposed apartments, which all count towards your affordable housing numbers. So to speak to Ms. McKinnon's comment, if you don't, if you, by using apartments, all one-hundred-and-sixty-two of these units count towards getting to your ten percent, you will be making significant progress towards your affordable housing goals. However, only twenty-five percent of these units will actually contain affordable units. So it's a win-win twice. But I want everybody to understand that the forty-B has site approval. Something will be built there on this commercial industrial zone property. So by voting this down, you will give the opportunity for the developer to put a hundred feet of green space between current houses on Copper Beach Drive and the apartments. The Selectmen all have this visual on this. I don't know if it can be presented to this meeting at this time. I have a copy of it that the developer provided to me. I urge you to not support this article and give the opportunity for the process to go forward and create a nice development with the buffers in place. Thank you.
Yes?
Jean Landis, nominee, again, let me just make a couple corrections. The Affordable Housing Trust has been in effect since 2017. And it's true that we do have slightly less than eight hundred thousand dollars. As I said previously, with the cost of one home right now going for six-twenty, we're not going to be able to buy and pay for too much affordable housing with the limited funds that we have. More importantly, we have a housing production plan that allows us to reach safe harbor by producing a certain number of affordable units each year. And I, I can have this confirmed by our town planner, but I believe we may be on a path to have safe harbor for the next year simply because we have produced sufficient affordable units for the year. So it's not actual, you don't actually have to meet the ten percent, but you do have to follow your housing production plan and meet the quota that they, they place in that. So we may very well be in a position of reaching safe harbor from fortyBs. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just need to make it clear, as far as Mike, I'm concerned, and, and what I believe to be true. Developer does not need these parcels to build what he's going to build. He doesn't need it. It's just our saying, we want to protect the community that's already there as well. This is not going to affect the development, it's not going to affect affordability. I mean, I, I thought I heard Mr. Guittaboni mention that it was going to be affordable housing for all of them. It's not affordable housing, every unit in there, however it is, two or three hundred is not affordable. No one could build that and make it affordable. It, it just doesn't happen. So this is not about obstructing forty-B, this is not about obstructing development. This is about protecting an existing community of your neighbors.
Thank you, just, just, if you had the microphone, I just want new information now. So if you got something new, then let's hear it.
Megan Hickey, forty, oh, me, sorry. Megan Hickey, forty-two Winthrop Street. I just want to remind people that a forty-B takes all of our local bylaws on the books and completely ignores them. It's run by a state, not the town, so the town has very little say. We've seen this in town already with May Ave, in Post Court, Howland's Lane. We're threatened with a forty-B every time as a scare tactic. Like you just said, it is not all affordable. There's a small portion of a forty-B that needs to be affordable, as well as, I'd like to also, I've walked this land with the Conservation Commission, and the land that they have suggested for a land swap has also been driven through by a giant excavator. So it is not in the same condition as the parcel that we are talking about. It's destroyed by an excavator. I just wanted to make that aware, that is new information. And I just lost my train of thought, so sorry.
Well, I'll give you a second, yes?
David Kennedy, thirteen Copper Beach Drive. I'm in, I'm in favor of this article for several reasons. I know some of them have been spoken of already. The bottom line here is, is that development goes in. I know supposedly there's going to be a hundred-foot buffer, but there's going to be a lot more trees that are, that are going to come down. The terrain is there, it'll be louder. The big thing is this, the big thing is the schools, the amount of traffic. At the end of the day, this land should stay landlocked and be conserved. Thank you.
Buzz Artiello, eleven Clearing Farm Road. I'll be brief. I was not aware of the land swap opportunity. As conservation, we don't see any of those ideas. So I, I urge the body to give the Selectmen a chance to make that hundred-foot buffer. We can always go back, these, these are town-owned properties now, so we can always go back next year in the fall and put them into conservation if that doesn't work out. So I'd like to give the Selectmen an opportunity to make this the best they can because that is, that project is going to go forward. Thank you.
Megan, you said you lost your thought. Did you have something else you wanted to add? You all set? Okay. Something new?
Yes, sir. It's my, from looking at, because I did look at the, the GIS maps, as I said, and it appears to me that Lot sixty-six twenty-seven actually contains a vernal pool. Can the Conservation Officer, Agent confirm whether that's true?
There's not a certified vernal pool there, correct Buzz? I can't confirm or deny presence of a vernal pool on-site.
All right, let me, let me rephrase.
What I can say is that at the most recent Conservation hearing on the NOI filing by the developer, which is proposing test pits and boreings on-site as due diligence work, that there is evidence of a vernal pool on the town-owned, one of the town-owned parcels furthest to the north, I believe. And that process is now working out between the Conservation Commission and the applicant as to whether they're going to show that on their plans as a vernal pool as defined under our local bylaw rather than the state. So that's, that's where that is at. But their team did, so our peer reviewer last year found evidence of a potential depression that could be a vernal pool within a, within a vegetated wetland. And then the developer's team, more recently this spring, did find a spotted salamander and what they believe to be spotted salamander egg masses in that pool. Spotted salamanders are an obligate species. If there's more than five egg masses, that would meet the qualifications for certification.
And, and is that, that, that Lot sixty-six twenty-seven?
I don't have a mental map of the property. It is the closest town-owned parcel to Cushman Drive.
Yes, so can, can the town planner maybe let me know that? What I, what I was, I've been on the Affordable Housing Trust, I've been on Conservation. I think that that particular parcel that Matt and I are having this exchange about should be in the Conservation Commission's jurisdiction, held by the Conservation Commission so that the roadway that's going to be proposed at a Cushman Drive and onto this so-called Paper Road Thomas Street is, is, is done with, with that in mind rather than with the road in mind. And I think that that would give the town more leverage for that as town-owned property. I think the other parcels could be very useful in terms of what Mr. Guittaboni is suggesting or in terms of what Jean Landis, nominee, is suggesting in terms of getting more affordable housing in town. We need it. There's no question about that. But I do think that that particular thing, rather than having a fight to the finish and all the vernal pool dies along with all the rest of them in town, that we should protect that piece of property.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Britt Opachinsky, fifteen Copper Beach Drive. I guess what I would want the town to also realize, from what I understand about this development, is that you're talking about the, the first opening coming off the end of Cushman Drive. It's a very, very narrow, no sidewalks, wetland, you know, streams on both sides. So you're talking about the traffic coming in off of three-A on that end, and then it connects is down at Marion Drive, at the train. So you are now creating a superhighway for every single person that has to get to the commuter rail, that wants to go to the dump, that wants to go to the, to the mall, and that wants to go to all these brand-new apartments that are at the mall. You, I live on that street and have for fifteen years. The buses and the, the pickup traffic, we've all talked about the traffic, but I just don't think anyone can imagine the amount of cars that are going to come zipping down that road. And I see the foot traffic now going from, down my street from all the apartments and the Baymont is, it has increased, I would say, a hundred times in the past year. The kids ride their bikes from Indian Pond down our street every single day to go to school. So I just don't know if everybody understands, and I don't know if that, I know it's not about this land, but I think that the town should really know and look at that piece of this development. I don't know how, I don't know how Cushman or Hilltop can accommodate that. And I don't know why that's not a hard stop myself. And I don't know why that's not a hard stop myself.
I think we heard enough. Uh, board of selectmen? Select board, sorry.
Can I just wanted to, uh, I would, this is Shay Lavon. I'd like to table this, um, to, to a further, a further meeting. I, I would rather table it. I think that I'd like to see us work together on this and not, the conservation is, wants to work with us as well. I'd rather table it than, than vote on it at this point in time, but...
Is there a second to table it? So that's it? It needed two-thirds votes to table this? So all those in favor of tabling this say aye?
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
Yes. I'd like to get this to a vote, so come here. Yep.
Is this on?
No. Raise your hands so they know what you...
All right, is it on yet? No?
Nope.
Hello? Hello? No. Is it, it's still not? Okay, here we go. Eric Crone, 43 Longwood Circle. And as some of you know, this is my sixth day on this Board of Selectmen, so I wasn't at this meeting. I'm learning a lot, uh, today as well. But my understanding, and please, somebody, um, interrupt me if my understanding is incorrect, but my understanding is that this 40B is going to happen anyway. So a lot of the roadways and the traffic and everything is gonna happen. Passing this, this particular article isn't going to prevent any of that from happening. But my understanding is what this is going to prevent us from being able to do is to negotiate with the developer to try to put together a better barrier, because the, my understanding is that the parcels are kinda off. They're not in a straight line. So if we were able to negotiate with this developer to transfer some of the land, if we do that, um, it could put in place a better barrier. Again, I'm not for 40B and additional traffic, but some of that is just completely out of our hands. So I would recommend that folks not pass this particular article and give us a chance to negotiate with the developer. We'll still own the land. We're not gonna be developing anything. Anything else that we do with the land, we'd need to come back here to town meeting.
I'm gonna take a vote.
I just want everyone to know that...
No, 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 I'm taking a vote. No, 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 sir, you're out of order. I'm taking a vote. Please have a seat. Okay, have a seat, please.
People need to know that...
I know, have a seat.
He's the one that's...
Okay, sir, please stop.
Okay. But I think people need to know that's true.
This has been debated. Everyone heard everything. I'm gonna take a vote on this. On Article 45. The, the table failed. It needs a two-thirds majority. We took the vote, it didn't pass. The article's before the town meeting. It's ready for a vote. It needs a two-thirds ma- majority. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
I'm gonna have to count it. Buzz, are you on Conservation? I'll count for you. If you're in the doorway, can you just step out of the doorway and can you take your cards All those in favor of Article 45, take your red or orange cards out, so we can count. Can you count me? I can't believe this is, I don't, I just don't believe that this is yet another time to try to get, get this resolved when they're not doing it.
I don't remember this coming to...
Oh, my God, yeah, we've tried this. It's, it's kind of... I have 32.
36.
36.
24.
24. All those opposed?
I have 21.
12.
12. I counted 21 and?
24.
I counted because one of my tellers is on a, a board, so...
You get 666?
6.66.
No, it's just you two to multiply it by three and then multiply it by whatever. It didn't pass.
0.61. And the two thirds is 0.66.
It didn't pass, right? It did not pass?
So we have 92 in favor, 57 opposed? It did not pass. Just to be clear, Article... The article failed. The next one is Article 46. Don't believe that's being, well, I don't know. Is anyone here to, to present Article 46? So that's not being heard. My understanding is no one's here to move Article 40, uh, wait, hands up. This is another advisory-type vote. It's non-binding.
Hi, I'm Megan Cannon, 61 Bogview Road. And for Article 46, this is to see if the town will vote to reject Eversource Electric and their contractors to run lines over the roadways in Tall Timbers Estates. Eversource will remove the newly installed monopoles in the Tall Timbers neighborhood and in any other residential in Kingston that were erected before a public hearing notifying the residents of Kingston. Eversource run the new high-tension lines underground for safety and preserve the natural landscape of the neighborhood, or take any other action relative thereto. Would anybody like any further explanation on this?
So the motion's to reject Eversource's request to run town lines over Tall Timbers Estate, having Eversource remove installed lines and having Eversource run lines underground? That's your motion?
Yes, correct.
Is there a second? Would you like to state anything?
I would just like to state that the purpose of the Kingston to Carver, um, reliability project, I think, was simply to improve the existing power lines to prevent things like power outages and from things like weather. The purpose of this is simply that we ask that these lines just be run underground as opposed to over the roadway. The monopoles that were put up are huge eyesores, and the residents of the Tall Timbers development were not notified prior to those. We were notified of replacement poles for the existing wooden poles that the power lines run through. So when these were put up, everybody was quite surprised because we were not made aware and that truly they are eyesores.
Hold on, I'm just gonna, I think this might have been some legislative action.
So Shay Lavon, we actually, at the last meeting, um, actually approved the, the, um, lines to go over, um, the town, so I don't know how that affects that, because we made the decision to have the, the lines go, because Eversource came to the last meeting. So I'm not sure how that would go about that. It was a public hearing.
Yeah, so this was a non-binding resolution in any event, um, but it, it's a matter within the board's jurisdiction and they've decided, I mean, you can move it and vote, but it doesn't have any force of effect, or effect.
So town meeting can advise the board of selectmen on this. We did vote on it on Tuesday in our meeting, uh, in a public hearing unanimously giving the authority to them, to the, to run those lines. And town meeting body, to the best of my knowledge, does not have the ability to tell Eversource to take down the poles, but I'd ask counsel...
Correct.
So it would, it is. It's what the petition stated. So we, once a petition is properly given to the clerk for filing for the warrant, it goes on the warrant. So then legal counsel advises us what our authority is within the, the scope of town meeting, so. I don't know if that's helpful.
Do, I mean, if you wanna vote, we can take one.
Can I just ask a question to town council?
Sure, ask in the microphone, please.
My question is just, you know, understanding that the selectmen have already voted, is there any vote that can be taken today that would provide any recourse to the residents affected by the lines and poles?
I mean, you could vote this and then the board understands what your position is, but you wouldn't have the authority to present anything new to town meeting if that's what you're suggesting.
I'm just wondering if there's a way to reword the art, the article, to potentially have this relooked at, or?
Not really. I'm sorry.
If you want, we can vote it.
But it would serve no purpose?
No, it'd serve no purpose.
So let's move on.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So you were drawing it? Okay. Then we're drawn. Articles, anyone here to present Article 47 or 48? Hold on, someone's standing. No, no. No, it's, no, I don't need anything. Do... No, I don't. Are you moving the adi- I don't need it moved. If you're not here to move it, I don't need it moved.
Yeah, I wanna move it.
That means we're gonna debate it?
The petitioner just withdrew it.
The petitioner withdrew it. If I don't, if it's not moved...
Can anyone move it?
Nobody moved it.
Anyone can move it.
Anyone can move it.
You have to be a petitioner to move an article?
Let me do what else?
Okay. Go ahead.
Twice, twice!
No, no, he said he can't. Anyone can move it. Go ahead.
Okay. This is gonna be fast.
If it doesn't get seconded, the meeting will be over after another vote.
They wouldn't do that to me.
But if he doesn't move it, the meeting's over.
Move that the vote, that the town vote to amend the Town of Kingston zoning bylaws by amending Section 5.2 of the zoning bylaw, Table of Uses, Commercial/Industrial Uses, by a, by adding a new use, filling and reclamation of land as permitted use in the C1 Commercial/Industrial Park District, and prohibited in all other districts, and further to allow the above sections to be renumbered in accordance with the reforming as approved under previous action taken by town meeting, or any other action relative thereto.
Somebody have a second, so let's debate it, let's talk about it?
Okay, uh, what this basically is, is about, um, is the state has a, a program called Soil Recovery Acts. They, they, they make it sound like it's not as bad as it really is, but what it is, is Kingston's taking out the good gravel, selling it, and the dirty dirt is what it is, is when they build a building in Boston, or still any city, or a place where the soil's not suitable for building, they have to get rid of it. Well, right now, Kingston's got in excess of 2 or 3 million yards sitting up there in the industrial park. A vote no on this will stop any more dirty dirt from coming to Kingston. Okay, well, you can debate it up there at the mic.
Yes.
You're right.
Hold on.
David Full, David Fuller, 233 Country Club Way. I believe, as stated, uh, there's an ongoing legal matter here between the town. What effect may our vote have on the pending legal matter?
Hello. So to be clear, zoning bylaws work prospectively, meaning looking forward. You don't, uh, there's a certain grandfathering that occurs. My understanding of the litigation, it's not my piece of litigation, but in my firm, is that we've taken the position that, um, the soil, um, removal and importation is a prohibited use in the Town of Kingston. And my understanding is, um, at this initial stage, we've been successful in, in showing that. I think what, when you said, Dick, are you hoping this fails so it doesn't come back?
I'm in favor of this.
Oh, I see. So what Dick is referring to is he's saying if this article fails, it can't be re-proposed for another two years pursuant to Chapter 40A, which is the zoning, um, legislation. So what I think Zip, Dick is trying to do is make sure that it doesn't resurface again. But right now, in that current pending litigation, we take the position that you can't do it at all, right? Yeah, but they are.
They are.
We're trying to stop that, yeah. Yeah, if you voted no and voted down this zoning bylaw, this exact zoning bylaw couldn't come back to this body for two years without the express recommendation of the planning board. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yeah, it does.
Okay.
And I have a follow-up, but I'll wait for other parties to talk first.
Go ahead.
Okay, so just for clarification, um, in my understanding, so right now, our bylaws are silent on this issue, right? Which counsel is telling us technically it means it's prohibited or not allowed.
Right.
Unfortunately, dirty dirt, in my opinion, has been coming into the town for years. We are attempting to stop it. We are in litigation. The party that brought this forward is trying to change the bylaw to allow the dirty dirt to come in and put it in our bylaw to allow it to come in. So a vote yes would allow this fill, this dirt, from other areas of the town under...
Or state.
Or state, um, that's being technically reviewed by EPA, to come into the town. So a vote yes brings this dirty dirt into the town. A vote no puts it concrete in our bylaws. No dirty dirt.
Move the question.
Well, it gets us closer.
Hold on, I got one more in queue.
Paul Gallagher, and I apologize for getting up before the question was called, but, uh, I think it's important to know that the, uh, the petitioner came in just maybe 10 or 15 minutes ago and asked not to move both of these articles.
But it doesn't matter because it's on the warrant.
It's on the warrant, and Dick moved it, but the petitioner didn't wanna move it. So...
So we're gonna take, let's take a vote.
Move the question.
For 47, all in favor of 47, say aye. All those opposed?
No!
47 fails, onto 48.
Move that the town vote to amend the Town of Kingston general bylaws by adding a new Section 12A authorizing earth reclamation, including the filling and reclamation of land as set forth herein, or take any other action relative thereto.
Anyone like to be heard? All those in favor of 48, say aye. All those opposed?
No!
Motion fails unanimously. I have one more motion. Motion dissolve or adjourn. I'm, I'm sorry, I moved to have the meeting dissolved. Do I have a second? All in favor? Thank you, everybody.